So when I report, this is.
Yes.
Oh.
It's a lot consolidation, so that means they've got two lots that they want to combine into one.
C V V.
Except for the planes, right? Doesn't need to be, but it is. Yeah.
Hey, have a good.
Good evening. This is a special meeting of the Princeton Planning Board. It's Thursday, August 3rd, 2017, and the opening statement is as follows. Pursuant to Section 13 in the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the sunshine notice of the Princeton Planning Board. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Comcast Media, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on the 26th day of July 2017.
Joe, can I ask you to call the roll, please?
Here.
Here.
Ms. Sproul? No, okay. Mr. Texarney?
Here.
Mrs. Trotman?
Here.
Ms. Omen?
Here.
Mrs. Gunning?
Here.
Mr. Williamson?
Here.
And Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Does anyone have any announcements? No? So let's go on to the findings of fact. You had two sets of them. They may have both come by email. The first one is Lauren Pfeiffer and Olga Kasty. This is from June 28th of this year. It was a minor subdivision, a lot consolidation. Anybody have any additions, corrections, anything to say about that? Could I get a?
Julie Capizoli, I move to approve this.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And I assume that the secretary will straighten out who was here and who was not on that voice phone. The second set of things is ROI renovations and development. This is from July 13th of this year. It was a minor site plan with variances, and it was denied. Any additions, corrections? Anyone?
I'll move them.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second? Anyone?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Now, we have a set of minutes. This is from the regular meeting of June 1st, 2017, and I believe, Louise, that you had some corrections.
There were a couple of paragraphs on the second page, I think it was, that were a little bit confusing, and I had some wording to suggest. Didn't realize Eileen was away, and sent that to her, and I don't know whether we want to just table them for next time, or Lee, did you?
We received your stuff. If you just want to read it into the record so that the board members understand, I didn't think it was all that complicated. We can make the changes.
Yeah, they're not substantive. It's purely for clarification.
Would you like me to read it in?
Did you bring it? Do you have your copy?
Well, I only have the excerpts, so if you could say what page and what paragraph on the page. I'm not sure what that was.
It looks like on page two, because the first comment dealt with Mr. West, and it would be under the discussion item, the one, two, third paragraph, where it begins, "Mr. West also noted that the definition of impervious was changed." Towards the end of that sentence, it says that there is a.
Lee, could you make that louder?
That there is consideration in Phase Two, and the addition would be of amendments to the stormwater ordinance, and then it would just continue on that single-family lots removed to be, so it would be, "Single-family lots be required. To meet these standards, however, the maintenance costs could be viewed as onerous," and could be, could be viewed as, has been added as well.
Right, it had read "could onerous," and I inserted "could be viewed as."
And I think we concur. It reads a little better.
And then the next paragraph at the end would read, "Mike Passaro's Stony Brook watershed was sworn in, period. He noted that often," I think is what was meant to say, it said, "He noted that off the larger single-family homes," and I assumed that that meant.
Often.
That "off" should be "often." So that, those are the two edits.
Okay, great. Thank you, Lee. Any other corrections, additions to this? Anybody? All right. If you're satisfied with this, Louise, can I ask you to move it?
Happy to move them.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
All right. That brings us to the hearing this evening. This is 20 Palmer Square East LLC. It's a major site plan, and as those of you who were here before remember, it was carried from the July 13th meeting after we had problems with the recording system and the electricity. So without further ado, I'm going to ask Karen Casey to tell us a little bit where we are and where we're going with this.
Yes. I just wanted to address the order of procedure for tonight. At the last meeting, I think it was announced that the process would be, the applicant would make their presentation. Counsel for the objectors, who did appear at the last meeting, would cross, as each witness was presented by the applicant, we would then have a presentation of testimony, if the objector has any, crossed by the applicant, and then we'd open it to the general public for comment. I've conferred with the board chair, and it would appear that it might be a more coherent and comprehensive way to proceed, to allow the applicant to complete their presentation, then have cross-examination by the objector's attorney, and similarly, the objector's attorney will have the opportunity to make his presentation, and then Mr. Goldman can do his cross. So I don't know if any other board members have a concern about proceeding that way.
That sounds like a good plan.
Sounds good.
Okay. So let's move on to the applicant, then.
Now, Mr. Goldman, at the last meeting, you know, it's this board's practice to swear on everyone, including attorneys, to the extent they give testimony, so we'll just swear in one more time.
Okay. You want everybody to?
If we can identify them for the record, sure. Who do we have?
Okay, so we may hear from David Eichler, who's here. You have Adam Rechnitz, Meredith Bzdzak, B Z D A K, Michael Mills, Tom O'Shea, Terry Smith, George Jackamart, Eric Nutt, N U T T, Matt Babice, B A B I C E, and me. So if we want to have everybody.
Sure.
Stand and be sworn.
Lady and gentlemen, if you would raise your right hand, you swear affirm the testimony you give this evening will be truthful.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. And don't be scared, I'm not planning for all of them to testify, but I figured while we were doing it, we would. When we left off last time, Tom O'Shea, our engineer, had walked through the site plan, and we're gonna, although we had started to have cross-examination under the plan today, we'll move through our witnesses as quickly as possible and then turn it over to counsel. One little bit of business before we move ahead. If you recall, there was discussions about the easement for the staircase and the windowwells the last time we were here, and at that time, I had told you the easement had been sent in for recording, but we didn't have it back yet. We have it back now, so I'm gonna give you a few copies. I didn't make tons of copies, but I give it to staff and counsel, and, but just for the record, the easement granted by the township to the post office that permits the windowwells and the staircase and ramp to remain has now been not only signed, but also recorded at the Mercer County Clerk's Office.
Mr. Goldman, I don't, my notes don't indicate that you introduced any exhibits at the last meeting, so we want to make this A1?
Yeah, well, let me say this. We were working off of a PowerPoint, which I have provided to Eileen, and I think that PowerPoint ought to be A1, and perhaps you want to mark this as A2.
Okay.
It's almost like a judicial notice kind of thing, but I thought you'd want to know that that piece had been completed. And so with that, we've gone through the site layout. I'm gonna have Michael Mills come up now. He's our exterior and historical architect, and he's gonna walk you through how we're preserving and maintaining this important building. Michael?
Well, thank you very much, first of all. At the last meeting, I think Lee Solo read into the record the proposal for this building. Is this too close?
Mr. Goldman?
It's good, but you have to tell them your credentials.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, counselor.
I know they know you, but.
All right. My name's Michael Mills. I'm a licensed architect in New Jersey. I'm a partner with Mills Insurance Architects in Princeton, New Jersey. Worked in town for about 35 years. I am the architect of record for this project and the preservation architect, as counsel already indicated. We have already been before SPRAB. We've been before the Historic Preservation Commission and have talked about the specifics of the application in great detail, which Lee Solo read into the record last meeting. So I would, I'm not gonna get into too much detail. I would just like to add to the presentation that we made before, a little more context. And first of all, I'd like to say one or two words about the architect of this.
Right, let me just, we all agreed to accept your credentials as an expert.
Oh, you have to vote.
Yeah. So please proceed, and the board should know that the Historic Preservation Commission report was handed out at the last meeting, so you have all had a chance to see it now.
Right.
And it's on our screens, by the way.
Am I okay to go?
Turn on your screens. Your screen isn't on.
Somebody has a comment.
Yes, please go on, this is technical.
Okay, thank you. I think it goes without saying, this is, Princeton Post Office is one of Princeton's finest public buildings, and has been since its construction. It was designed by Charles Clodder, who was one of the most prolific and finest architects of the first half of the 20th century. Did amazing work all over the country. He did a lot of work in Princeton, many buildings on the Princeton campus, on the University of Pennsylvania campus. He designed the Cathedral of Learning at the University of Pittsburgh, the world's first Gothic skyscraper. He designed, he did the master plan and designed 15 buildings on the University of Colorado campus. Later, he became the supervising architect for the federal government, and he did a lot of buildings under Roosevelt, in the Roosevelt administration. Major public buildings have his name on the cornerstone. And at the conclusion of that period, he did the Princeton Post Office, which is a little different for him. It's a Georgian Revival building, not a Gothic building, and not a grand public building. This project, first and foremost, is about preserving a great architectural resource for Princeton, and it's also about putting a vibrant new use into this building. My role on the team is to make sure that it all happens in a good way, and that the historic features are preserved. And last, this is the front facade of the building that you see on the screen. Basically, you, what Mr. Solo said, and what I'll say again tonight, is that the envelope of this building is in extremely good condition, and our intention is to repair and preserve it and restore it, and we've done a lot of work to understand what needs to be done to do that, and we're very lucky that the building was so well-designed to begin with that the repairs are not too major. Could I have the next slide? One area that does need to be repaired, there are two wings on either side of the building, to the south and to the north. They have built-up roofs, they have brick parapets, there's a lot of cracking of the parapets because the roofs are leaking, have leaked, and they need to be replaced, and we're planning to do that with a new material. While we do that, we're gonna take the opportunity to remove the deteriorated mechanical equipment that is kind of an eyesore, and we're going to put new mechanical equipment on the roofs in better locations, and I'll show you a drawing in a minute. Next. This is Palmer Square South. We were asked by SPRAB to consider new trees on this facade, which we can do, and you see, this area is, there's no parking allowed, and that'll come into the discussion a little bit later when we talk about deliveries and trash pickup and so forth. And you can see the corner of that one, that green mechanical unit on the roof that's gonna be removed and replaced. Next, please. This is the view looking back, essentially at what's going to become the loading area, and you see, to the right is the existing loading dock for the post office being used right now for parking for whoever can get there first. Next, please. Looking down the street toward the Nassau Inn, there's a crosswalk down there that is being maintained. There's an existing tree that badly needs to be trimmed. Next slide, please. You see how dark the street is because of that overhanging tree, and it overhangs the building, which is not good for the building, and we're planning to prune it. SPRAB also asked us to put a new tree in on the other side of the former loading dock, which we are planning to do. Next, please. So this is the current situation at the back of the building. The one feature that we are changing about this building, as opposed to repairing or restoring, is the area of the loading dock, which is an open canopy roof structure on Palmer Square East. We are planning to replace it with a new glass entry for the restaurant. Next, please. And this is our rendering of that new feature. You can see how, what a more welcoming facade this would become, what, sort of a, it would really clean up that whole part of the street and be a real asset to the downtown. I should say that the preservation of the building is David's goal, David Eichler's goal, and always was. I think that's why we were hired, and when he bought the building from the federal government, it came with it a preservation easement for the features of the building that the government wanted preserved. We have structured our documents to exactly follow the requirements of that easement. We, in fact, have had meetings with the New Jersey Historic Trust and the State Preservation Office, who are overseeing that easement, to make sure that we are conforming to the requirements of that easement. We also have a letter from Dan Saunders, the former director of the State Preservation Office, finding no adverse impact in the sale of the building for use as a, as another, for another use.
Let me show you this. I'm gonna show you this letter and ask you, this is the letter you're talking about?
Yes, that's the letter.
So perhaps we can mark this one as A3?
Next slide, please. So one of the major improvements we're making to the existing envelope is, in addition to replacing the roofs that are leaking, is to move mechanical equipment, and you can see on the left-hand side of this image, the green mechanical unit that's there now, it's quite tall, it's about six feet tall. We are planning to replace it with other units that would support the kitchen and the brewing operations, and that equipment is shown on the slide to the right, in the sort of orangish color. The new system is a highly energy-efficient system, variable refrigerant volume system. The units are small, they're stacked up in a row, which you can see on the east side, and then there's one large ventilating unit that is four and a half feet tall, it's lower than the existing unit, and it was moved toward the corner of the building, the southeast corner. And the reason it was pushed there was input received from the New Jersey Historic Trust, and the other input we received was, well, how do you treat this? Do you screen it? Do you, what do you do to minimize the effect? Well, first of all, just by moving it to the east, you're not gonna see it as you drive down into Palmer Square off of Nassau Street, and secondly, we were told that we should paint it to match the brick, and that's what we are doing here. We are not planning to screen it. The screens would have to be two feet in front of the unit for servicing. They would be more obtrusive, you would see them from the street, and this, we think, is the best solution for this building. Next, please. You have in your packet a whole series of images like this that show exactly how we're repairing and restoring the building. Next. The skylights is in really pretty good shape, just needs some minor repairs. The slate roof's in great shape. There are some issues with the built-in gutter that need to be addressed, and they will be as part of the project. One other feature that's being changed is a deteriorated stone stair to a back door is no longer needed, and that is going to be removed rather than restored, and that's also the location for a new sidewalk lift for the brew pub, and we have talked to the State Preservation Office about that, and they are in agreement that this could be done, and so we're proceeding with that idea as well. Next, please. Oh, that was my last slide. How about that? I'm available to answer any questions at the end of our presentation, and I'd like to turn this over to our traffic consultant. Hi, George.
Yes, good evening. My name is George Japma from BFJ Planning, principal. I am a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey. I have appeared in front of this board many, many times, starting in 1983, I think. We were asked to look at the parking and traffic impacts, and I want to raise three points. One is parking requirements as per your zoning code, and then I want to talk a little bit about traffic impacts on a Saturday evening when the restaurants would peak, and then also about parking impacts on a Saturday evening. The review of your zoning code tells us that the conversion from post office to restaurant actually requires less parking. The zoning code says that today, the restaurant needs 18 parking spaces, whereas the post office would need 22 parking spaces. So that's based on the interpretation of your zoning code. And we did the calculation also because there was some discussion about, you know, the lower level, the basement level, whether that should be included or not. If we do include the basement level, that square footage that's on the basement, you know, if we do that calculation for both the post office and the restaurant, that still remains the same, meaning the restaurant has a lower parking requirement than the post office. So from that point of view, this application satisfies your zoning requirement, and there's no need for variance. I should address a little bit, because last time, before we lost electricity, there was talk about the Institute of Transportation Engineers parking requirements for restaurants, that they're significantly higher than what the town code requires, and that's true, but there are some good reasons for that. You know, the town, obviously, is a very different.
They would be more obtrusive, you would see them from the street. And this, we think, is the best solution for this building. Next, please. You have in your packet a whole series of images like this that show exactly how we're repairing and restoring the building. The skylight is in really pretty good shape, just needs some minor repairs. The slate roof's in great shape. There are some issues with the built-in gutter that need to be addressed, and they will be as part of the project. One other feature that's being changed is a deteriorated stone stair to a back door is no longer needed, and that is going to be removed rather than restored. And that's also the location for a new sidewalk lift for the brew pub. And we have talked to the State Preservation Office about that, and they are in agreement that this could be done, and so we're proceeding with that idea as well. Next, please. Oh, that was my last slide. How about that? I'm available to answer any questions at the end of our presentation, and I'd like to turn this over to our traffic consultant. Hi, George.
Yes, good evening. My name is George Japma from BFJ Planning, principal. I am a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey. I have appeared in front of this board many, many times, starting in 1983, I think. We were asked to look at the parking and traffic impacts. And I want to raise three points. One is parking requirements as per your zoning code, and then I want to talk a little bit about traffic impacts on a Saturday evening when the restaurants would peak, and then also about parking impacts on a Saturday evening. The review of your zoning code tells us that the conversion from post office to restaurant actually requires less parking. The zoning code says that today the restaurant needs 18 parking spaces, whereas the post office would need 22 parking spaces. So that's based on the interpretation of your zoning code. And we did the calculation also because there was some discussion about, you know, the lower level, the basement level, whether that should be included or not. If we do include the basement level, that square footage that's on the basement, you know, if we do that calculation for both the post office and the restaurant, that still remains the same, meaning the restaurant has a lower parking requirement than the post office. So from that point of view, this application satisfies your zoning requirement, and there's no need for variance. I should address a little bit, because last time before we lost electricity, there was talk about the Institute of Transportation Engineers parking requirements for restaurants, that they're significantly higher than what the town code requires. And that's true, but there are some good reasons for that. The town, obviously, is a very different situation from what the ITE represents, the Institute of Transportation Engineers. The statistics that are given by ITE are statistics for very suburban conditions. So typical suburban conditions, like a restaurant that would be on Route 1, where all the trips are made by automobile, and where also all the trips are kind of primary trips, people go there just to go to the restaurant and they leave again. In downtown Princeton, the conditions are significantly better and more favorable for traffic generation and parking, in the sense that we have a certain proportion of people that walk or bicycle to the destinations. There are quite a number of people living and working within very close proximity. We also have the situation where people are already parked because they may be working in downtown, and then they go to the restaurant or they go to the post office. So whatever use it is, whether it's a post office, restaurant, or retail, that reduces the parking demand significantly. Your code also takes into consideration that we have a shared parking situation, so that some of the users may peak, and the restaurant is a good example, peaks at a time when your parking conditions downtown are significantly lower than compared to what they are on the mid, the weekday, in the middle of the day. Your parking code requirements are based on a study that was done quite a number of years ago, where the consultants who did that study looked at how many destinations that people went to, people that were in the downtown, when they went, they were working there, or they went to retail destination, went to restaurant destination. And that's how they developed the code that you have today. It's basically looking at the parking demand on the midday, on the weekday, in the middle of the day, and it does recognize that during the evening hours, there is significant parking available, because that's when the offices and the retail stores are closed. So that's the explanation for the significant difference between your code and what ITE We also looked at the traffic impacts on a Saturday evening, and that's partially as a result of the comments that were raised by your town engineer. And yes, the restaurant generates more traffic on a Saturday evening than the post office, there's no doubt about it. And so we looked at that and used the ITE statistics, but we took a 15% credit because of the more village type or borough type environment or urban type environment. And that gets us to a peak traffic generation of about 120 vehicle trips during the peak hour in the evening, on a Saturday evening. And that's about 72 vehicle trips inbound, 48 vehicle trips outbound. That's not a significant impact for downtown Princeton for several reasons. One, 72 is generally under a threshold, that's the peak traffic arriving threshold that traffic engineers use to do a more detailed traffic impact analysis, that threshold tends to be 100 vehicle trips at one location. The other reason it's not significant is it occurs at a time when traffic is not at the peak in downtown Princeton. And then the third one is that not all those vehicles, actually, I estimate very few of these vehicles will drive to Palmer Square East, to the location where this restaurant will be. A lot of these people, they will come from various directions, they park on street, or they go straight to a parking garage, and then they walk the last, you know, one, two, or three blocks, so that we do not expect, you know, a significant traffic impact from this new use. And of course, we should remember, the use is there today already. The Triumph Restaurant does exist today, so the traffic to a large degree, even though there's a small increase in the flow area, but the traffic is there today already. Similarly, for parking, we, just to verify that on Saturday evenings, there is reserved parking in downtown, we did a survey, and this was on February 24, 2016, when we started to work on this study. We surveyed the three municipal garages, the town garage, the Palmer Square garage, the Hullfish Garage, and Chamber Street Garage. In the evening on a Saturday, we did two tests, one between 7:00 and 7:45, one between 8:00 and 8:30. And in both cases, we had between 560 and 570 vacant spaces in those three garages, just in those three garages by themselves. So that's a significant parking reserve that you have on a Saturday evening. So then the town, as you know, the town is doing the parking study by Nelson Nygaard. I reviewed that study, and we were surprised to see a diagram in the Nelson Nygaard's presentation that was done through the town that showed that the Hullfish Garage, Chamber Street Garage, and the municipal garage on Spring Street were between 90 and 100% full. And I said, well, that's strange, surprising. I called Nelson Nygaard, the project manager for the study, and asked whether there were any special events. They checked with the Nassau Inn. There were nothing, there was nothing special. They had events for 102 people that evening. And the survey was done on May 6 this year, Saturday evening. So 102 people, that's roughly 40 cars, you know, not everyone comes in their own car. So that did not explain why these garages were 90 to 100% full. And he mentioned, the project manager from Nelson Nygaard mentioned that they actually did not go into counter cars because there were signs at the garages that says garage full, and they would not let anyone in. So they assumed that they would be 90 to 100% full. But that's just for the garages. Beyond the garages, for the core of the downtown, they showed that on Saturday evening at the most critical time, there were still 1,900 vacant spaces. So that's an area that goes beyond the immediate Palmer Square area. There were 1,900 vacant spaces in the larger downtown area, but they call it the core. It's not the total study area, it's the core. But we did go back in July to verify again, this was July 7, after we did the study, and we went again on a Saturday evening into the three garages. And again, we did two rounds of observations. One was around 7:00 to 7:30, and the other around 8:00 to 8:30. And the Hullfish Garage had again a sign that says lot full. We don't know exactly why. It may be because there's construction going on in that lot right now. We did go in and we saw there were, at that time, 17 vacant spaces in addition to the parking that was occupied by the construction equipment that's there. And the two other garages, Chamber and Spring, had plenty of vacant spaces. So that was a similar condition to the one that we saw the first time. And then we went back at 8:00, between 8:00 and 8:30, there was, in the Hullfish Garage, there were 54 vacant spaces, plus that area that was taken over for construction. So that we feel that there is ample parking capacity within even the immediate area surrounding the site, the project site. And the photos that you see here are photos that we took. You can see on the Chamber Street Garage, the Spring Street Garage, at the various time periods, you know, these are the upper levels, they're completely empty. So that, to conclude, we feel that there is a significant parking capacity, parking reserves available in your downtown. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Hey, George, can I, I just want to ask you one other question. So on the two different evenings, the Saturday evenings that you counted, did your study, do you know if Triumph Brewery, the existing facility, was open on those evenings?
Yes.
So the folks that park at the Triumph, people who go to Triumph Brewery and need to park, to the extent those people park in any of the garages, the vacancies that you found even included the fact that Triumph Brewery parking was in the building?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And so, but generally now, in terms of your opinion for a downtown restaurant, because we've heard a lot of sort of concern that although the ordinance sets a certain number and we comply with the ordinance, that, you know, the quip is, well, but really, where are people going to park? Is it your view that there's adequate parking?
Yes, I do think there is adequate parking. I don't know the explanation for that one evening where there were signs at both the Chamber Street Garage and Hullfish Garage, but I know also from past studies that we did for the Art Center and also for the expansion of the Nassau Inn, that there is ample parking reserves, especially in the Chamber Street Garage. The Hullfish Street Garage gets busy, especially when there are larger events at the Nassau Inn, you know, when they have weddings and so on, then that, the Hullfish Garage gets very busy and can be close to capacity. But the Chamber Street Garage has several levels, has large capacity. There's generally, there is parking available in the Chamber Street Garage.
And is there, in your world of traffic analysis and study, is there any requirement for a restaurant in a downtown that the parking be within, you know, one block from the restaurant?
No, there is no requirement like that, you know. If there was such a requirement in Princeton, you know, Princeton would not be Princeton. You know, it's, the character of this town implies, of the downtown area implies, that, you know, you walk a few blocks to go to your destination, and that's what makes Princeton the attractive place that it is. If we had parking for every use, it would be a very different place. So, no, I think it's very normal, this kind of condition. I feel very comfortable that the people who will go to this restaurant will find parking. They find parking today, there's no doubt about it.
Yeah, one last thing, George. I'm not sure everybody caught that, but you looked at the municipal study, and maybe you could just say it again, but I think you said that the municipal study found that on a Saturday night, within the broader Princeton downtown, there was, I think, what was it, like 1,600 vacant spaces available? Something like that.
Yes. The Nelson Nygaard study done for the town looked at the whole downtown area, the larger downtown area, and that goes all the way up to like Lehigh Street. I'm not sure I got this right, I can't read it. But it includes a much larger area. And for that area, they identified on Saturday evening, the worst, highest peak period, which was 7:00 PM, they had 7,000 vacant spaces. That's a large area. And then they looked at what they called the core, and within the core, they had 1,900 vacant spaces, 1,905 vacant spaces. So there is parking there, and obviously, everybody likes to be as close as possible to their final destination. So some of, the on-street parking within the Palmer Square area is very busy, it's always busy on a Saturday night as well. But, you know, if you go beyond that immediate Palmer Square area, there is plenty of parking capacity.
Thank you.
So next, we're going to have Eric Nutt and Matt Babus, who are going to come up. They are in charge of operations at Triumph Brewery, and they're going to go through, take us a minute to set up their computer, but they're going to run through some of the operational questions that we know were raised and are on folks' minds. But basically, they're going to run through how this facility operates, how and when garbage gets picked up, what kind of deliveries they get, what the hours are of operation, and the like. And so if we can have a minute, we will get them going.
Mr. Goldman, is this still part of Exhibit A1, or?
No, this will actually be a new Exhibit A4. It's a separate PowerPoint. All right, so, yeah, so Eric, this is Eric Nutt. Eric, will you describe your role at Triumph Brewery for the board?
Absolutely. Good evening, my name's Eric Nutt. I've been with Triumph Brewing Company for 17 years now, and I serve as a sales and operation manager. Basically, I do reside in the Princeton office, although I'm a part of the corporate team, but I have been there for 17 years handling large group sales, and now all of our operations on a daily basis. So thank you.
And you've prepared a PowerPoint to just run through some of the operational factors at the brewery, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you. So this evening, we've prepared a brief logistics presentation. We'd like to, we'd like to show, specifically, we'll talk about our deliveries, the items being delivered, the vehicles that they're being delivered on, frequency, and also, we're going to touch on trash. Okay? So what we did, we put together a chart. This shows our kitchen purveyors. Kitchen purveyors are vendors that deliver items to what we call the back of the house, which is the kitchen. These items would be produce, dairy, protein, anything that the kitchen would need to operate on a daily basis. We showed our vendor listed, the frequency of the delivery, the approximate time of day, the length of delivery, and the truck used. Take a look at that. Next slide, please. Thank you. In walking around downtown to do a little research, we took a look at what some of the other restaurants are using to receive their deliveries. And what you'll see are a couple of 18-wheelers, a Cisco truck, the Dawn truck, that Dawn truck is on Witherspoon, right next to the library, the Cisco truck, obviously Palmer Square, right by the Nassau Inn, and a larger Baudor delivery truck. We do not use 18-wheeler trucks, with the exception of one delivery, which I will touch on on a later slide. We listed our front-of-house restaurant purveyors. These vendors deliver items to the front, which is the restaurant, items such as bar materials, linens, office supplies, and dry goods. Again, same layout, frequency of the delivery, time of day, approximate, delivery length, and the type of truck used. And you'll notice for all front-of-house deliveries, there are no refrigerated trucks. Everything is either a box truck or a straight truck. These are some examples of our delivery trucks. That Samuelson Sons truck right there is on South Tulane. The photo up to the upper left-hand quarter is actually on Lincoln Court, directly behind Triumph. And then Ambrosi, which is one of our current purveyors, the shot there on the bottom shows right at Palmer Square, directly across from our proposed new entrance, already delivering to another restaurant there on Palmer Square. This is an example of a Cisco truck delivering to a vendor on Palmer Square. And we're going to play this for you. Obviously, it's a little loud, and that's a typical delivery. These trucks were noticed delivering two times per week to at least three or four restaurants on Palmer Square and Hullfish. And their length of delivery is anywhere between 45 to 50 minutes in length. They also stay running the entire time, which you'll see here on this slide.
Okay, I think, I think they got it. I think they got it. Okay, just to clarify, these are not trucks that are, would be delivering to Triumph, these are to other restaurants in the area?
Correct.
Mr. Nutt, did you take these clips yourself?
Between myself and Mr. Eichler.
And do you know approximately when?
In the morning hours, between the hours of 7:00 and 10:00 AM.
In the last few months, or?
Yes.
This was after the, this was the? Since the last hearing. So after the last hearing, when this question was raised, we made sure to go out and begin surveying and taking some photos.
But, you know, I'm sure that they are really noisy, but he could have put the volume as loud as he wanted. I mean, I just, I mean, I'm sure they were noisy, but I think we should remember that.
I agree. I was too noisy.
Have a quick question. What's the difference between a box truck and a straight truck? I don't know straight truck.
Straight truck would be more along the lines of a WB Mason or perhaps a FedEx truck, you know, Sintos truck, a little bit more straight line, a little taller.
So just to go back to the previous slide, if you would, I just want to make sure we understand. So this is a larger delivery truck right on, is that Hullfish Street?
Yes.
Right by Mediterra. And I, and I just, for the board's perspective, the food service deliveries that you expect are going to be right all the way on the far side, as far away basically from this location as you, your building would permit.
Correct.
And it would be basically at that corner by Windbury's where they're already getting deliveries.
That's correct. That's correct.
And I believe last hearing, it was reported that the police folks, safety folks, had been out there and were recommending creating a loading zone, actually, right at the area where your loading would be. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Next. Just introduce yourself and what your role is.
Good evening, my name is Matt Babas. I am the regional general manager of Triumph Brewing Company. I've been with the company for approximately nine years now. I have prior, previously worked as general manager of the Princeton, current Princeton location with Triumph. So, been with the company a long time. I'm in charge of operations, staffing, and a lot of what we're presenting today. What I'm gonna touch on now is the brewery pickup and delivery. Obviously, as a brewing company, we're making beer. So, along with that comes certain deliveries. As Eric noted earlier regarding the eighteen-wheeler that we do receive a delivery from, I just wanna note that our grain delivery comes once per quarter, so approximately once every three months, as opposed to what you saw, which is on a couple times a week basis. So, the grain delivery is coming once per quarter, between approximately eleven and one PM. It comes on a freight truck, and they are there for approximately thirty minutes. In addition to that, at the end of the brewing process, we have our spent grain, which is after we brew, the grain needs to be picked up, and what we do is we have it picked up by a local farm, Cherry Grove Creamery, and they use it for cattle feed. So, it gets reused agriculturally and locally. It's picked up in a pickup truck, so a small six-to-eight-foot bed pickup truck, through there approximately five to ten minutes, it's a quick pickup, and that's the majority of the brewery deliveries and pickups. Next, please. We're gonna get into the trash and recycling. So, this is our current, well, this is a look right here on the slide of the current setup in and about Princeton. You'll notice Waste Management, Republic. We use Republic, so they are currently operating in town. Next slide, please. These are a couple pictures of a few of the trash and recycling setups in and around Palmer Square. You'll note in the bottom left, the Windbury's pickup area on Palmer Square South, and up top is outside, I believe, of one of the parking garages around Palmer Square. And also, these are some photos on Trash Day of the trucks picking up the trash. You'll note on the left slide and the bottom slide, the trash bags on the curb to be picked up by the trash companies. Next slide, please. And this is our current setup with waste removal. On the left side, you'll note Republic Services. This is the trash pickup, is approximately three times per week, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, between the hours of seven and nine AM. It comes on a normal-sized garbage truck, and they're there about ten minutes. And also, on the right side is Republic Recycling Services. They come twice per week, Monday and Thursday, between the hours of seven and nine, on a garbage truck for ten minutes. I also wanna note, seeing as we are a brewery, unlike some of the other restaurants and bars operating in town, we don't sell bottled beer, so our glass waste is much less than that of a normal bar, perhaps. So, I just wanna note that as well. Next slide, please. And lastly, this is our current trash and recycling area behind 138 Nassau Street on Lincoln Court. We have approximately fifty square feet of storage area for our recycling and trash. And moving into this new project, we plan to almost triple that space and provide a really nice, unique setup to handle our trash and recycling, which our architect, Terry Smith, will explain next in his presentation.
Adam, did you wanna say something?
Sure.
Just introduce yourself, you're sworn.
Good evening, my name's Adam Recknitz. I am the founder of Triumph Brewing Company, and I've owned it since the very beginning. I used to live in town, I moved out of town, back to my hometown of Red Bank about ten years ago, but I lived in town on Pine Street for ten years. And I wanted simply to say this, 'cause I think it's an important point, and I don't want this to sound glib, what we have with the post office building, as opposed to our current setup on 138 Nassau, 138 Nassau, we have a back alley, which is Lincoln Court, Nelson Glass is back there, and we're back there, and there's a house at the very end of the street. So, it takes the form of an alley, and we do our best to keep it clean, but as you've seen in all the other photographs, everybody's doing their best to keep it clean, but it is, there are dumpsters, and it gets loud with the trucks picking it up, and smelly, you know what I'm talking about. This building, the post office, is very self-policing in this regard. The four sides of the building are all extremely visible, there is, in effect, no place to hide, there is no back alley, there is no place where you could put any kind of garbage, any kind of recycling, anything you wanted to keep out of the public's eye. And what that does, has forced us to do, is to, in effect, design this inside the building. So, in the basement plan of the drawings, which I think you have, you will notice a garbage storage area that's refrigerated, you will see a recycling area that's not refrigerated. All the services that would be, that we have currently have been put down in the basement because there's no place to hide it. And I just, I, I think, in a very global sense, that kind of underscores the design challenges that we've had to deal with as we've been thinking this design through, and I think, fortunately, for the public, you wind up with a much cleaner-looking project.
Adam, let me ask you a question. Now, so the garbage will be down in this refrigerated room, you have a schedule for when the garbage truck comes, from seven to nine. The garbage will be brought out in the morning, the day of the garbage pickup?
Yeah, one of the concerns we had heard before, and I guess some restaurants may put their garbage out the night and leave it out overnight, which I don't understand why there might not be a borough ordinance prohibiting that, but just because, and somebody previously said, restaurants, you know, they don't, they only open, you know, for lunch, and so, of course, when the trash gets picked up, they're gonna leave it overnight. People are coming in to open up the restaurant and to prepare for the day's meals at nine o'clock, and if the trash, and we would work, we have no problem in working with our trash company, that we would put the trash out right before they came. That is eminently feasible.
And by the way, you would use what kind of containers? Bags, bins?
I think the quietest possible, and I think what we're looking at simply is, we would use normal trash bags and put them in one of those Rubbermaid rolling carts, bring them up from the basement, roll it out to the street, so you're not dealing with all these banging dumpsters, which, I know how those sound, and so you would have manual...
And at the same time, once those bags are picked up, it's gone, there's not a bunch of empty cans laying around on the street.
No, that's correct.
Good, thank you.
So, thanks very much.
Alright. So, Terry Smith will walk you through the interior. And Terry, don't forget to give your credentials to the board.
My name's Terry Smith, I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. I've been licensed for over thirty years. My office has been in Princeton the entire time, I'm currently, my office currently is on Witherspoon Street, above the Continental Barber Shop, where it's been since 1992. I have testified before this board before, as well as other boards in the former borough and township over that period of time.
We accept your credentials.
Thank you.
Now, Terry, it's unusual to have two architects on a project. What's your relationship to design work for Triumph Brewery, and what's your role in this project?
So, I'm gonna be working on the inside of the building. I've been Triumph's architect since the very beginning. We designed, my office designed, the current brew pub up on Nassau Street in 1994. We're working on one, we did one for them in New Hope, we're currently working on one for them in Red Bank, so we're, we have a really close working relationship, you know, I understand who they are, and what they need, and how they operate, and so we have a kind of a pretty close working relationship, and a very sort of experienced working relationship, you know, in terms of, not just, you know, the sort of the aesthetic design, but, you know, how they operate and how they do things, so that we can make sure the facility functions as well as possible for them. The first slide that I've put up here is, are the existing conditions, just to get everybody oriented. The lower plan on the left is the basement plan, it's a level most people have never seen. It's actually pretty interesting down there, it's all concrete, concrete floors, concrete piers, concrete ceiling, has a decent ceiling height, it's fairly rugged basement, the boilers down there, and a lot of service things. The plan just above that is the main level. On the lower edge of that plan is the mural lobby, what we call the mural lobby, which was a former main lobby of the post office. The space just behind it was the mail sorting room, which is a big room, the nineteen-foot-high ceiling. Again, most people never had a chance to get back in there, and then service areas around the side. And the third plan on the upper right is a mezzanine plan of the current post office. There's an observation gallery that wraps around, where one can look both into the lobby, but mainly back into the mail sorting room. So, that's kind of the shell of the building that we started to work with. Next. This is the main floor of the proposed brew pub in the post office. Palmer Square East is at the top, the Palmer, the Palmer Square, the green is at the bottom of the photo, that plan. This level, the main level, essentially, the level where the mural lobby is, is the main lobby, I'm sorry, the main floor of the restaurant. Most of the seating is on this level, there's, I think, a hundred and seventy-eight seats on this level. This is kind of the primary dining floor in the restaurant. We've placed the kitchen on this level, because most, that's where most of the seats are, and that's gonna provide the best service to the patrons. And then on the top of the plan is the, is the former loading dock for the post office, which we've converted to a new entrance. The new entrance on Palmer Square East comes in at a mid-level, between the basement and the main dining level. So, it's from that level that people will come in and be greeted, they'll either go down a small flight of stairs, approximately four, a little more than four feet into the basement, I'm sorry, no, they'll go up four feet to the main level, or down about five-and-a-half feet to the basement level. So, from there, people kind of, it's like a split-level kind of entry. There's also a lift in that area to get people who might be in a wheelchair up to the main level, and from the main level, there's an elevator that services all of the various floors in the restaurant. The kitchen, the other features of this floor is that we, as I just said, we put the kitchen on the south side of the building, which is the side of the building toward Windbury's. It seemed to us that, we did that for a number of reasons. One, it had to do, it dovetailed very well with where, what seemed to be the best place for the building to receive deliveries, for kitchen. That side of the building is not quite as, as kind of prominent or sensitive as the other side, which is along Chambers Walk. We felt Chambers Walk is a very significant pedestrian element in town, and it would be the nicest if, as people were walking by this building, along Chambers Walk, through the large windows that are on that side, they could see diners, they could see the life of the restaurant, then the kitchen could be put on the other side. So, that's kind of how we, how we decided to allocate, sort of the means, you know, kind of divvy up the area of that floor. The other thing that is happening on this main level is we're going to cut a large opening in the floor to open, to create an opening down to the lower level, and in that opening, looking down to the lower levels where the brewery will be. So, we're creating a kind of a double-height space and some visual connection between the lower level and this level as well. Next slide. This is the lower level, the basement level of the, of the restaurant. We've broken this up into essentially three areas as well. In the middle of the plan is the bar. We decided that unlike the other facilities that we've done, that in this case, we would, instead of putting the brewery up in the, up high to be looked at, we would put it in the basement. It seemed, given the character of the basement, the concrete, the kind of the visual toughness of it, that the brewery, the stainless steel tanks, would kind of aesthetically fit pretty nicely into that area. And we also thought it would be, you know, interesting to have the bar down there as well, and sort of take advantage of the, the kind of the physical nature of that space. It kind of, the concrete is very strong, I think it's gonna, you know, kind of wrap around the bar, and so we're gonna be able to kind of create a unique environment down there, that's somewhat separated from the dining levels that are up above. So, when you look at this slide, the bar is in the middle, to the left is where the brewery is occurring, it's both kind of storage for the brewery, refrigeration for the brewery, and then the area that the brewing is done. On the right-hand side is a kind of a service area. On the right-hand side, on the extreme right of the plan, those little things protruding out to the right are window wells, top and bottom, and then a larger window well in the middle, those exist, and we're gonna use those window wells as access to the basement, both to come in and come out. The upper, upper little protrusion is gonna be a sidewalk lift with kind of metal grates that open up on the sidewalk when it's in use. The longer elongated middle protrusion sticking out, we're gonna put a stair in, that'll provide access down to the basement, as well as egress. So, deliveries are gonna be coming in along that side, picked up at the sidewalk level, immediately dropped down into the basement. And then the lower part of the basement plan right now is kind of a holding area, both for food, as well as for trash and recycling. Right next to the door, it's at the bottom of the stairs there, there's two spaces in this drawing. One is a refrigerated room, where the trash will be kept overnight, ready for pickup the next day. And the room to the right of that, closer to the outside, would be another storage area. That storage area is for recycling materials, cardboard, glass, metal, and also sort of a grease barrels, which restaurants need to have for their, for the oils that they use after cooking. Now, that's, the space we've allocated so far is about a hundred and twenty-five square feet of space in the basement for that, those purposes. Again, it's significantly more than Triumph currently has outside on Lincoln Court. There's also a big walk-in cooler down there for food that's coming in, that can be stored, as well as food pantries, and some prep areas down there, so that some food can be prepped down there before it's brought up to the main floor, for, you know, to be incorporated into the, in the menu items in the main, in the main kitchen. So, that whole right-hand side is really devoted to kind of in-house service, whether it's mechanical, deliveries, storage, garbage, recycling, and we're gonna, you know, kind of continue to work on that area. It's kind of a work in progress to, you know, make sure that we can accommodate everything internally, so that there'll be no, you know, no reason to keep things outside until they're ready to be picked up, or, of course, when they're, when they're being delivered. Meredith, could you go back to the last slide? One thing that I didn't mention, and this is really important to the whole concept of the design, is that on the lower part of the, of the main floor plan is the mural lobby, the former, you know, the main kind of lobby to the post office that everybody's familiar with. It's our intention to maintain that room to the extent we possibly can. We want that room to kind of be a reminder for everybody of the, of the... We want that room to kind of be a reminder for everybody of, of the former building and, and really of the kind of the beauty and, and the design and quality of that space. So the mural is in there, mural will be preserved, the barrel vaulted ceiling will be preserved. There's a lot of woodwork in there that we would like to preserve. So that room is going to have a kind of special quality to it. And it's a room that, well, you know, can probably be used for special events, it's right off the green. So as the rest of the building is kind of transformed into a new restaurant and brew pub, that space is going to, we're going to hold on to its character and make it kind of an integral part of the whole, you know, this whole restaurant concept that we're putting together. Next, next. The other thing that we're doing is we're adding a mezzanine or a balcony in what is currently this, the double-height mail sorting room. The mail, that, that room is, has a nineteen feet tall from floor to ceiling, so there's quite a bit of space in there. There's a skylight in the top that lets light through from, from the roof. So we'd like to take advantage of that height and some of that space and, and we're proposing to build a mezzanine along one side of that for some dining that would be there overlooking the sort of the main dining on the, uh, on the main floor in, in the restaurant. Now, the space on the bottom there is the double-height, the barrel vault in the mural dining room, so obviously that's kind of coming through to the second floor as well. We've cut two sections through the, the post office to sort of get a sense of it sectionally from side to side. This is an east-west building section, to the right is Palmer Square East, the driveway. To the left is the green. You can see on the, on the far right-hand corner, there's a level right off the sidewalk, which is the entrance level, that's this glass box we're going to build along that side. From that space, you either drop down into the basement, where the bar will be, the brewery will be, or come up half a flight of stairs to the, um, to the main dining level. On the far left is the mural dining room, you can see where the barrel vault is. And in the middle, you can see where the, the kind of dining balcony or mezzanine is in the former mail sorting room. Next. This is a section going the other direction, it's looking east, to the right-hand side is Palmer Square South, that's the side along Windbury's. To the left is Chambers Walk. So this is a view cut through the, the mail sorting room in the middle. You can get an idea of where the brewery is on the left-hand side, you can see where some of the main, where the first floor has been removed, where we're creating an opening between the mail sorting room, the main floor of the dining area, and the lower area where the brewery and bar is. And on the right-hand side, you can see some of the steps coming down off the sidewalk on Chambers, on, um, Palmer Square South, which is sort of our service delivery area into the basement, and then the, the sort of trash and removal area back out to the sidewalk. Uh, I think that might, oh, next, sorry, one more. This, this was a view of, obviously, the, the south side of, of, um, of the post office building, Windbury's is directly to the right. You can see the iron railing and those lower windows around there. That's kind of going to be our, our delivery area. Again, we're going to preserve the metal railing, there's no reason that we can't. That'll provide access down into the basement. You can see on the roof, the, that air handling unit up there that's kind of poking its head up, that, the green, um, the green rooftop unit. So this is, this is the view of the building that you currently get as you come down the sidewalk or drive down into Palmer Square off of Nassau Street. We were, um, we're really conscious of the fact that we were going to have to put quite a bit more mechanical equipment on this building. What was needed for the post office were two rooftop units, one on each low roof, has, doesn't have that big an occupancy. For a restaurant, given all that it has, the occupancy it has, we need, we need to put more air conditioning in this building as well as, uh, equipment that'll facilitate the operation of the kitchen, refrigeration. So we, we wanted to be really careful about how we thought about that and what we proposed. So if you go to the next slide, uh, well, you can, again, kind of see it from this back corner. One more, one more. So one of the drawings that's, that's in your, the drawing set, were some close-up views that we did of the, the sort of the, the rear entrance and where the mechanical equipment was going to be. And I'd like to, I'd like to take a moment and just underscore the, the type of system we're going to put in this building. And this was chosen, this is, you know, based because of the location and because of the sensitivities that we had to this place. We explored initially what, what we would need if we put big rooftop units on this building, and we found that they were pretty large, that they would be very visible, and by nature, rooftop prepackaged units are fairly noisy as well. So we decided to use a kind of a, a state-of-the-art air conditioning, heating and air conditioning, air conditioning system called an EVRA, EVF, Variable Refrigerant Flow, R V F, Variable Refrigerant Flow. These systems are, the equipment that is necessary on the roof is much, much smaller than standard equipment. It's almost, has a quarter of the footprint that a standard rooftop unit would have. This type of equipment is far more efficient than standard rooftop equipment. Standard rooftop equipment has, um, uh, let's see, on efficiency rating, on a SEER rating, it's, the best you can possibly achieve usually is in the eighteen, nineteen range. The system we're going to be putting on has a SEER rating in the mid twenties, around twenty-five, it's highly efficient. And the other thing that's nice about this system is it's quieter. The system is much quieter than standard rooftop equipments, equipment. So we, we're proposing to put a system on that's smaller and less visible, much more highly efficient than you would typically put on a building, and it's, and it's, and it's quieter than, than standard equipment as well. And as had previously been, been explained by Michael Mills, we're kind of grouping the equipment around the back corner, so as you come down into Palmer Square, that's sort of the most elevated view you have of the building. You're not going to be looking at a lot of rooftop equipment, you'll be able to look at the building and appreciate the building. Equipment is kind of wrapped back around the side, so it's, it's not, it's not as visible.
And it's, and it's going to be painted the same color as the brick to blend.
Yeah. I mean, most of the equipment will be able to hide behind the parapet wall that, that currently exists, but some of, some of the, the tallest equipment is about five feet tall. We can push it up against the building far back, which you couldn't do with standard units, and we can paint it, so it'll, it'll blend in. One of the other features that this, this drawing's doing, so this, this plan is showing some of the details of the, where the service and deliveries are coming in and out, how we're getting access to the lower level. It's showing the heights and the scales of some of the rooftop equipment and where we're placing it. And there's also information on this about the signage that we're going to propose. We're proposing to meet the signage ordinance and require no variances for that. We're going to have our main entrance sign on the glass box that's on Palmer Square East. We're proposing to put a second sign on the corner, the south-west corner of, of the facade. You can see it's in the upper left-hand side. We're, we're, we have as of right, the ability to have two signs because, because we're on a corner lot. The, the signage we're proposing on the south side would be small directional, just to help people who are coming into Palmer Square understand that that's, that, that building is the Triumph Brew Pub and Restaurant, and then main entrance sign around, around on the east.
All right.
Mr. Goldman, are these slides another exhibit or are they part of A1?
This was part of A1. We jumped back to A1. I think that's our main case, I don't think we have other witnesses. I'm looking for the baby outside. We're done with our presentation. I was going to ask your indulgence, one of the store owners, the Ben Spoon, asked to have an opportunity to just express her support for the application, and you may have seen her, she's here with her one-year-old, and asked that she not maybe have to wait till the very end, if she could just have a minute or two and take the baby home. So we wondered if you would indulge her that.
Is she here? Oh, she sat there with the baby. Right.
It's coming?
Can you give us five minutes to find the baby and...
The baby, the baby escaped. All right, well, we'll, I could sing for a little while if, if you want.
Well, is this the time to end?
I think they found her. Here she comes.
Let me ju, Mr. Goldman, let me just have a, a special part of the public part of the meeting and let this young lady give her testimony and then we'll go back to finishing up.
Should we swear the baby in?
No, I thi, I think the mom will be fine, man, if we could have your name and address for the record.
Sure. Gabrielle Carbone, owner of the Ben Spoon in Palmer Square.
And Ms. Carbone, do you swear a firm that any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay. And you're aware of the proposed Triumph Brewery and did you come here today to express some position with regard to that?
Yeah, I'm, yes. I just wanted to let you guys know that I am in complete support of Triumph moving across the way in Palmer Square to such an iconic address, really. It's, it's the post office and the Ben Spoon actually looks right at it. It's a, it's been a beautiful and iconic address for a really long time. And I think Triumph has proven again and again to be such great, great neighbors and a really integral part of the community, so I implicitly...
And do you feel that having Triumph Brewery on Palmer Square will help or hurt the businesses on Palmer Square?
I mean, I, I really believe it'll be a vibrant and welcome addition. And I, I, more importantly, I implicitly trust them to kind of honor the legacy of the post office, which was one of our greatest worries when we heard that the post office was going up for sale. Like, who knew who it could be? And when we heard that it was going to be a proven business, who's, again, a really integral part of the community, we just knew we could trust that, and that's really important to us.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you for indulging her. Thank you.
Let me, let me close the public portion for now. Mr. Goldman, I, I think there are board questions for...
Sure.
Anybody?
Yep.
Yes.
Couple of quick questions, and I'm not sure, well, I guess one for the architect. If I were to, when I visit with someone who is with a walker or a wheelchair, can you guide me through how I get to the mural dining room or to the main dining room from the front? I saw, all right, I heard you reference a lift, but I don't see one on the plan, so I just, I'm just curious about how that, how you get from the front door to up the stairs or, or across to the mural room.
Go back one more. I don't know how to point this out, but in the, in, in the top of the, the building plan is where the new entrance is going to be.
Right.
You know, this area in here. So right at sidewalk, the entrance, there's a little vestibule that comes in here. Right there, sorry, my hand is shaky, is a handicap lift.
Okay.
And that handicap lift, so you come right on, right up, and then you're on the main level and you have access to the whole main floor.
Okay.
And then, once you're on the main floor, there's an elevator here.
Right.
So if you wanted to go into the bar in the basement, that would get you to the basement, or if you wanted to sit on the balcony, that would get you up to the balcony.
Okay. So that's a full-size elevator?
Yes. The ele, the elevator is full-size, the, the handicap lift is a standard handicap lift size.
Okay. The other question I had was about, I don't know whether to call it garbage or recycling, but I was curious about whether the restaurant has the ability to recycle food waste, compost food waste? Is there such a service available? Do you, do you do it? Would you, I'm just...
Hello?
Wondering about the possibilities.
It would be great, I think, don't quote me on this, I think by weight, the garbage going out of a restaurant, sixty percent of it is plate scrapings. There was a proposal, and Eric Nutt may be able to help me remember, that, where there was a, a woman affiliated with Rutgers who, and did she make a presentation in, for, here? For high, for a high-temperature composting facility? And, and the problem with, and I know that a bunch of cities around the country are doing this already, and I couldn't tell you where they are, but this is more of a municipal, I believe this is a municipal, has to take place on a municipal level. I'm not sure...
Yeah, and we do, we do have a weekly organics food waste pickup, and I, so I don't know whether that's even available to restaurants, but I know there's a tremendous amount of...
We'd work with them, right?
Oh, I'd be delighted. I mean, I mean, it's a win for everybody. It's, you divert stuff, go into landfill, you can do something useful with the byproduct.
It's heavy, too. I imagine it would save you a bundle and tipping fees.
Nope, nope, no question.
Yeah. Oh, well, something to...
Yeah, I think McCaffrey's does it, so, you know.
Sounds like you could do it. We're certainly willing to cooperate with the program.
Are there, are there other questions for...
Could, could I please add something to Terry's testimony on barrier-free access? One thing he didn't mention was that there is an existing...
You have to use the microphone, Michael.
Sorry?
We can't hear you.
Have to go over there?
Oh, Michael Mills.
I was sworn before, I'm Michael Mills, on the Architect of Record.
He got younger-looking since he testified.
There's, there's an existing ramp on the Palmer Square side of the building that will remain and will be usable as part of the, as part of the barrier-free access facilities for the restaurant. So you, you will have a platform lift in the new entrance, you'll have the existing ramp which you see in, did see in that, that front image of the building, and then you'll have the interior elevator to, with access to all the different levels, so...
That, that's the ramp that was the cause celeb for the easement, but it's now in place.
Yep. Yeah, that, that ramp is on easement land property. But, no, we, we think the building is very well supplied with barrier-free access.
I, I should probably also mention that we did review the various reports, BRAB report, Historic Committee Report. We had no objection and I'm sure we can work out the details with staff. The only slight caveat I would give you is, I, on the environmental report, there was, I don't know, about twenty different recommendations. And we're willing to, to cooperate and work with them, but not all of them are things that we think are even feasible. For example, we don't think the municipality would let us use pervious sidewalk material on the public sidewalk, which was one of the recommendations. The other one I can tell you is, the owner really does not want to have a shower for employees in a restaurant bar. It's only a, a recipe for problems, believe me. So, but we're willing to go through that list and work with staff and, and do which, the ones that we can do, we're willing to do, but we'd like to treat them as recommendations that we will do our best to, to cooperate. But other than that, you heard recommendations for street trees, for ramps, walkway ramps, handicap facilities, sidewalk widths, all of that. We, we agree with all of the comments from the reports.
All right. Mr. Goldman, I had a question about the easements. I haven't had a chance to really look at the document. I haven't had a chance to really look at the document you distributed, but I know that the, the post office has, is going to give a perpetual easement on the property to the New Jersey Historic Trust at the point of sale. And we furnished a copy of this document, which was in fact accepted by the New Jersey Historic Trust in 2013. Now that these easements have all been detailed out, will that document be changed to include them? It will not.
That document will actually itself be recorded. So there are, now there are two different easements, right?
No, but what I want to know is that the, these easements on the window wells and so on were not part of what was included in the deed, the deed of gift that was signed, that was sent to the New Jersey Historic Trust to be signed when the sale takes place? And I wondered whether there's going to be a...
The window wells, and, yes, the window wells, the staircase, one of the conditions of the municipal grant of the easement to allow those to remain was that they had to be included in the historic easement, so that they will be part of...
So it will be rewritten before it's formalized?
Yes, it'll, it'll have an edit to just add those couple of pieces. But the big document, and it's pretty substantial, you've seen it, is not going to substantially change. And the Historic Trust has seen the municipal easement and also signed off on that. So I think it's, it's all, as you know, it took a year and a half, but we've got everybody...
It wasn't clear when the hearing started on this that it was finished, so it's good to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just as a follow-up, who checks up on that and makes sure that it happens?
The trust people actually check.
They do, okay.
Yeah, it's the State Historic Trust, so it's not...
I just wondered if anybody, if we needed to keep it, put it, put that on our checklist to make sure it happens.
You don't have an obligation to. Obviously, you could get in touch with the State Historic Trust if you felt things were not being done right. But it's not the federal government that's, you know, they delegate that to a local state authority, so it's much more local.
Any other questions? Anyone? All right. If there's no further testimony on this and so on. I think we're ready for cross-examination, which we put off to the end of the testimony.
Good evening. Chad Warnkin of Archer &amp; Greiner.
Mr. Warnkin, it's the board's practice to swear everyone in to the extent you give testimony, including attorneys.
I was sworn in last time. I'll be sworn in again.
Thank you very much.
But before I start, I just wanted to preface my comments. Again, I represent one of the neighboring property owners. This is not a case of an objector, of a competing business who's trying to get a business advantage. This is a longtime resident of the town who's coming in, who's got concerns regarding the building and the intensity of the use that's being proposed there. We're not opposed to a restaurant going in there. My clients live downtown, they frequent the restaurants downtown, they want to see a vibrant use there. We just believe that the use that's being proposed is too large. To kind of remind the board of where we were and where we left off last time is part of, or the main thrust of our case is, we believe this change of use is a, leads to a much more intensive use than was previously there. What was occupied the space was the post office. The post office generally used the first floor. They had a mezzanine for sorting. And there was a small area, according to the floor plans, in the basement that was used as a break room and bathrooms. What's being proposed now is a 13,000-square-foot restaurant. While the way the floor area definition in the ordinance reads, it's 6,800 square feet, but in actuality, it's a 13,000-square-foot restaurant. The ordinance has provisions in the downtown district that above a 10, only 10,000 square feet or below eating and drinking establishment is permitted by right. Above 10,000 square feet, it's a conditional use where they've got to meet all the conditions, including the parking requirements or requires a conditional use variance or devariance in front of the zoning board. There's also a limit about the floor area ratio of 1.5. Here, if you count the basement, which is being used as usable space, the floor area ratio is about 1.8. Again, it would be in front of the zoning board of adjustment for a use variance, a devariance. So while we're not opposed to seeing something going into the space, and we believe something goes in, we want it to see something in there, we just think what's being proposed is too much, too intense. And it's going against what we believe is the intent of the ordinance by the happenstance of the way the floor area is defined. So I just wanted to kind of put that into perspective before we started the cross-examination, because I've got a number of different questions for basically all of the different witnesses. I'd ask some indulgence, because parts of it go to, because we've got questions with respect to how the parking and traffic was calculated, the type of use. So that's going to go to the type of operation it is. So there's going to be operational questions we've got. There's questions, some details with respect to, again, the definition of basement and the floor area or the elevations on the outside versus the inside. And there's different things we want to go through. So I just wanted the board to preface, I'm not trying to be difficult when I'm asking these questions. We're just trying to get all of the information so the board can make an informed decision. We do believe there's going to be more information required with respect to traffic. As to parking, I know there was some reference to studies or counts that were done in May and July. I had checked with the board secretary after the 10-day, and there was nothing. She said no, no new information was filed. So I'm not sure if the PowerPoint was presented or if that was on file, if it was just information that was being testified to today. But again, it was not information we've had a chance to review. So with that, I guess we can start the questioning. I just wanted to lay that groundwork for the board and understand where we're coming from, that it is not a competing business. We're not here to stop development. We're not here to stop an existing restaurant from changing locations. What we're here to do is to protect the interests of the neighborhood, what we think is what the intent of the zone was, and just to make sure that the board has fully understood and grasped the information, and everybody's had a chance to digest it before they take a vote. So if we can, I'd like to start with some operations questions. Questions for operations. I'm not sure if this is to Mr. Nutt. Curious as to the existing restaurant, the, how many tables are at the existing restaurant? And what's your average turnover time?
Thank you. Not sure exactly how many tables are in the restaurant.
How many seats?
280 seats, including the bar.
208 or 80?
80.
Okay.
265 to 280, depending on bar stools. And average turnaround time is about an hour to an hour fifteen minutes.
Okay. And what's the breakdown between the bar and restaurant?
Sure. Matt Babas?
The receipts, percentage-wise, bar receipts, liquor receipts, restaurant, bar?
Sure. The food to bar, it's probably in the 60/40 range, food to beverages.
Okay. And currently, for a 280-seat restaurant, how many employees would you typically have? Or how many do you expect to have at the new restaurant?
Sure. We expect to have a similar number of employees. We currently house about, in the range of 100 employees. And that's including managers and lower-level employees.
And what's the most at any shift?
I'm sorry?
What's the most at any shift? Is that 100 at one time or...?
Sure, no, that is 100 on the books at all times. Per shift, you're looking at between back of house, which is the kitchen, and front of house, which is the running restaurant, anywhere from 30, 30 to 50 employees, depending upon which day of the week. We obviously staff up for the, for the more high-volume shifts. Typically about 10 to 15 employees in the kitchen and about five, four to five managers in the back of house. So actually, let me, let me scratch that. Going a little too large there. So it's in the range of 20 to 30. I'm sorry. That was a little too high. I apologize.
And it's shift turnover, is there some overlap between the two or...?
Yeah, there's typically a small amount of turnover. There's actually more of a gap between the morning shift and the evening shift because there is a sort of a lull. So therefore, we're able to release some of the employees and then for the night shift, bring on more employees for the more busy dinnertime.
Okay, and you do both lunch and dinner, correct?
Correct.
And Saturdays, Friday and Saturday nights typically your busiest time or...?
Absolutely.
Okay. At the new restaurant, are you proposing any live music in the evenings?
Absolutely.
Okay. How about outdoor seating?
Not to my knowledge.
It was at the SBRAB meeting, I think, that somebody, a board member asked, was desirous of seeing outdoor seating. We don't currently have any. The sidewalk out front, as designed, is going to be wide enough to accommodate a handful of tables, but I think this has to be approved by the town.
Okay, so you'd put that as a condition before, you'd agree to a condition before any outdoor seating, you'd come back for approval?
I think we have to. Isn't that right?
Right. You can't just put outdoor seating on a public sidewalk. You have to go to the municipal governing body. It was not ever part of our application. We hadn't thought about it, but folks at SBRAB thought it would be a good idea to add some life to the street. And we said, if the town wanted that, we would consider it. They asked us to at least be sure the sidewalk was wide enough so that if that was desirable, and that's what the folks designed.
Would you guys agree before you go back in? I'm not sure how the procedure works. If it's just a permit or that, would you agree to notify the neighbors before you start or apply for outdoor seating?
I'm not, I'm not sure what you're asking. I mean, I think this is...
If I could jump in.
Mr. Solo, before you answer that, I don't think we've sworn you in because you haven't spoken yet. So I think, why don't we swear everyone here, Mr. West, who's here for the town, Mr. West, Mr. Bridger, Mr. Stankis, the town's traffic consultant, and Mr. Solo. Gentlemen, do you swear affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
I do. When it comes to outdoor dining, Lee Solo, the town, when you're doing it in a public right-of-way or the sidewalk in this case, a license is required. It's an action held at a public meeting. I don't believe council holds a formal hearing with notice, but it is a public meeting and it is placed on an agenda.
Okay, and I, I understand that. I guess we're just asking for the neighbors so they, right now, we know what's in front of the board. We're just asking if the applicant would consider providing notice to the neighbors before they make that application.
If I might, maybe if the board is concerned, as is the objector's attorney, that could be a condition of approval, that if they do apply for outdoor dining, they provide some sort of notice to the neighbors.
Gee, I was going to say, if we agreed to that, would they withdraw their objection?
No.
Oh.
One more.
Okay. A couple more questions. With respect to the seats down in the bar, I think the plan showed 75 or 76 seats downstairs. What do you expect the actual occupancy to be? Because I know lots of times it's more than the number of seats there.
Is the question regarding, I mean, there's a fire, the fire department sets, the fire marshal sets an occupancy, maximum occupancy code. Is that the question?
Oh, well, yeah, I guess that was the question. Or the way the, if you look at the plan, it says occupancy 76 or 75 seats. And I was, my question is, that's different than 75 seats. So I'm just trying to find out, are you limiting the occupancy to the basement area to 75 patrons? Or it can be more than that, obviously, correct? That's what I'm just trying to confirm.
It would be whatever the legal occupancy is. I mean, we don't prohibit people from standing at the bar, so there may be more people there than seats, but there's a legal occupancy limit based on fire code, and we're going to honor that occupancy limit.
Does the architect know what that is? I'm just asking if the architect knows it, too.
We don't know what that number is yet. It's based on a kind of complicated analysis of egress capacity, exit capacity, space for occupants to get to those exit ways, you know, maintaining adequate walking space, clearance space. When we, typically what we do is when we apply for our building permits, that's part of that process, that we prepare drawings that very accurately show how egress and access is maintained. That would determine where there might be, where, if there is, where there would be space where people could be standing, and then what's a kind of a safe code occupancy for the design of the facility, given its exits. So the, so the short answer is, it's not, that's not an analysis we've done yet, but it's an analysis that we have to do, and it becomes a part of the permit process and part of the code review process.
Okay, but it'll be more than the 275 seats?
I, you know what? I can't tell you that. We haven't done the analysis.
A little bit more about the trucks and the traffic coming in. You had a couple slides up, and you ran through them quick. I wasn't able to get my notes that quick, and you didn't really testify them to, they were on the slides. Can you just kind of give me a little more detail about how many trucks are you talking about on like a per-day basis and a per-week basis and the type of trucks?
There were, on the slides, there were 10 back-of-house trucks listed, which are all of our purveyors, so 10 kitchen, and actually 10 front-of-house trucks. They come as frequent as four to five times per week. Some come daily, with the exception of Sunday, and some are only once a week. And some of those vehicles are actually twice per month. They're more of a specialty item purveyor. The front-of-house vehicles, most of what you saw there are once per week, some twice per week.
Okay. And you, can you agree to limit those type trucks to ensure that they're not going to be the big tractor-trailers, that they're going to be the box trucks that you've represented?
We, as I said last time, we've been at this for 22 years. These are the kinds of trucks that come. On the other hand, we have no power to limit the size of trucks that a particular delivery company would use. We can only tell you what our experience has been, nor do I believe the municipality has the right to limit the size of trucks that people use in interstate commerce. But I would say this, we're not going to be using nearly as many tractor-trailers as the other folks around us are using. As you heard, our experience has been one tractor-trailer delivery every three months of the barley and grain. That's once every three months, four per year. In our experience of 22 years, that's the larger trucks that we get. But we don't feel we have the legal ability to limit that, nor do we feel the community has actually a legal ability to bar those trucks from its roads. And certainly, you shouldn't do it to one restaurant and not all the restaurants. That wouldn't be fair.
Again, not to belabor the point on the trucks, the tractor-trailer was, I understand what Mr. Goldman's indicating. The question with the tractor-trailer, you're proposing, was that, if I understood that correctly, you think that's only going to be once a quarter for the barley beer?
Sure. For the malted barley delivery for the brewery, it typically comes on a once-per-quarter basis. And the tractor-trailer or freight truck that's used is not refrigerated. And again, we do a large, larger delivery... And again, we do a large, larger delivery or larger order once a quarter to account for what we'll be brewing over the course of a couple months.
Okay.
Just to clarify, we, most of the larger grocers, PFG, Performance Food Group, Cisco, U.S. Foods, they're the big guys coming in with the tractor trailers. And historically, we've shied away from using them and we engage much smaller purveyors. So historically, the only, the only tractor trailer that we've, comes in with any regularity is four times a year.
All right, I've got some questions for the architect as well. I'm sorry, questions for the architect.
There's two here, so let us know which one.
Is it O'Neil, Mr. O'Neil? Or, no? Oh, Terry, I missed the last name. I apologize.
Terry Smith, he's the interior architect, and Michael Mills is the exterior architect.
Okay. This is for Mr. Smith.
The in-house and out-house.
This is for Mr. Smith, the interior architect. If we could pull up, just on the exhibit, I guess sheet E 1.0, which is the existing building floor plans? Great. Can you kind of go through with me when I'm looking at the basement, which I guess is the floor plan in the bottom left? I can see a break area, restroom, the large center portion of it. Do you know what that was used for? Is that storage?
All right, and what I'm going to ask all of our witnesses to do is to say their name again, because I see our court reporter is struggling at this distance.
Terry Smith. The first time that I was down in the basement was kind of late in the post office's use of the building. And there was sort of miscellaneous scattering of mail and some shelves and some bins that would move mail around. I didn't really notice anything, you know, specific.
Okay, so you weren't aware really of the prior operations of the building?
No, no. Well, I haven't went in.
That's fine. Sticking with the basement, I just wanted to get in, do you know, and maybe this is the, the engineer might know, I'm not sure, what is the outside, the average outside elevate, ground elevation around the building?
This is going to be Tom O'Shea is going to answer this. I know we did this calculation to figure out if it was a basement or not a basement, because that was very important under the ordinance in determining FAR.
It looks like it's approximately elevation 204.
Okay, but it changes at different spots, correct?
That's right. On the Palmer Square side, it's 206, and on the Palmer Square East side, it's 202. So I just averaged, say 204.
Okay. When you guys were figuring out the average here, I know that was, that was done by spot shots, I guess?
Topography, yes.
Did you guys take into account the outside window wells or the outdoor stairs when you're coming up with the average grade?
We did the average grade at the floor plate of the building as it meets the ground on the outside. So we didn't, I wouldn't have calculated the individual window wells. It's the ground plate as the foundation hits the ground.
Okay, so you didn't take the average, taking the dips into account?
I didn't do the window wells, because the window wells come up to the surface and there's a grade on top.
Okay, so, and then if I could ask the architect, what is the, the finished, the elevation of the basement ceiling? Because again, it's just important as to how it's quantified as, as a basement. If it's more than a four-foot separation from the outside average ground elevation to the bottom of the basement ceiling, it would qualify as a story, which wouldn't trigger, being the 13,000 square feet, which would be a conditional use variance and the floor area ratio variance. So that's why it's somewhat important to kind of understand what the number is. And one of the reasons I'm asking why if that, if, because if the number's real close and we haven't taken into account the different dips for the windowsills, because there seemed to be a fair amount of windowsills and outdoor steps, if it changes at six or seven inches, it may make a difference as to whether it's a basement or not. And I'm just curious if that calculation had been done.
We, right now, we don't know that elevation.
Okay.
We did, we did the calculation, but we just don't know it right now.
Tom, when you did the calculation, it was quite a long time ago, did you conclude that we complied with the ordinance that would define this as a basement and exempt from FAR?
It is, and we checked with the municipality as well as far as our interpretation.
Do you know how close it was, though?
I don't recall.
Because again, if there's a question as to how that elevation was calculated, if it was close, it's a difference if you're in front of the right board.
I can tell you, my recollection was it wasn't close. It was like a matter of feet, not inches.
You have to use a microphone to get on the record, please.
We're just, the aside there was, and maybe you're...
So what we did is, not only taking the ground elevations on the outside, we did a 3D scan of the basement, so we had all the elevations inside the basement. We did a detailed study, and Rich is right, is we were not close to not being compliant with that description.
If we can, can we pull up the elevations, just because it looked close when I was looking at the various elevations, or at least on those plans that you brought out?
I'm not sure if you have sheet CE6 in the set. I don't think you have it. It, it's in the submission. Is that sheet CE6? Sheet CE6 is the site grading plan. And on the site grading plan, we have the elevations along Palmer Square East averaging, I'm going to say 203 approximately. The basement floor elevation, there are two elevations in the basement. One is for the basement finished floor, which is elevation 197.15, but there's a mechanical room space of 193.45. So the, the average of the basement is 195 and a fraction.
Is that the floor of the ceiling for the basement?
That's the basement floor. I don't have the elevation of the ceiling here.
That's fine, it's just, that's something that I would ask the board, ask to get prior to a vote, in that it's important as to whether or not the board has jurisdiction.
He's asking for the basement elevation ceiling, not the floor, the ceiling. And we don't have it on this plan. I know. So let's, let's take a look at it, the... The basement, the first floor elevation, what elevation is that? 207? What's the thickness of the floor? 207 is maybe a foot and a half?
Yeah.
So it's 205?
Yeah.
So the ceiling height's going to be somewhere around 205. The first floor is elevation 207.65?
Again, if, if that calculation wasn't done, taking in the average to the accounts, I'm not sure if that can be done right now. We'd ask that they come back and provide that information and kind of move along.
Well, why don't you keep going with your questions and we'll see what...
They seem a little preoccupied right now.
No, we're not. Could you, could you please continue with your, your questions while they...
Sure. If I can have the architect still...
While they deliberate, do you want to move on and ask some other questions?
Okay. You mean skip away from the architect? I had other questions for him. I'm not trying to be disrespectful.
Mr. Goldman, we've asked Mr. Warnikin to continue with his questions, so we don't want to exclude you if you're still working on your answer.
Yeah, let me, let me just take a moment to read the definition, at least in the ordinance, so we'll know what we're talking about. Basement is defined as space in which the ceiling, defined as the bottom of the structural members of the floor above, is less than four feet above the average finished grade line from the outside walls of the building, and is more than six feet, six inches in height measured from the finished floor, except at points of entry or access. And, and as I said, we did this calculation. I know that township professionals reviewed this application, you know, this, this calculation. I apologize, it's been, it was over a year ago when we first submitted the application, and I just don't remember it. But maybe while he's asking his other questions, maybe we can find the, the answer.
Okay, Mr. Smith, kind of get back into that. Kind of putting aside whether the basement is a story or not, the basement is habitable space and it's even proposed to be occupied, correct?
Right.
Mr. Smith, you need to speak up.
You need, you need to find a microphone. Yes, if Mr. Goldman isn't using his, maybe you could use, Rich, there we go.
Sure. With respect to the basement, I understand it's the applicant's position that it doesn't qualify as floor space under the ordinance, which is one of the items you're looking at right now. That being said, the basement is being proposed to be used as habitable space and that it's being proposed to be occupied and used by the public and the...
Yes, correct, absolutely. We, we just feel we should follow the ordinance and the definitions of the ordinance. The ordinance doesn't say that basements can't be occupied. The ordinance has a specific provision that says you don't include this qualifying basement space in the calculation of FAR. In the ordinance, again, where it limits the use of restaurant space as a permitted use to 10,000 square feet of floor area, with a capital F and a capital A, using the defined term floor area. So again, if you follow the ordinance, which I hope we all agree is something we all should be doing, we didn't ask for a variance. We followed your ordinance. Perhaps there was a reason that the governing body decided to exempt usable basement space from the calculation of floor area, but that's what they did, and it's not for us to second guess that. But there is no place in that ordinance that makes it then not usable space. It's just not calculated in your floor area calculation under the ordinance. And so that's why we say we comply with the ordinance. That's why Jack, Lee, Derek have all concluded that we comply with the ordinance, because we meet the terms of the ordinance. And if we can't rely on the terms of the ordinance in designing these projects, we're all in trouble.
And, and I understand Mr. Goldman's position. I was, what, what I'm getting to is the impact of the change of use in that the basement previously had a small area actively used as part of the post office, the break area and the restrooms. Although it's not scaled on the plan, it looks about a thousand square feet. What's being proposed now in the basement is full occupancy. So in actuality, what's being, the change of use, it's going from a 7,500-square-foot post office that was, had, being actively used, to a almost 13,000-square-foot restaurant. And that goes to the impact, the change of use. One of the things the applicant is saying is, there's no change in impact with respect to parking, there's no change of, impact with respect to traffic, because they're looking at simply the floor area ratios and not looking at the space was actually being used.
That's not true. Actually, we're suggesting to you that there's a dramatic reduction in traffic, because the post office was the most intense use in town with over 1,200 trips a day.
There's been no testimony provided on that.
Excuse me?
There's been no testimony provided on that at all.
We'll do it on rebuttal of your, your, you're asking questions. But I think that's in some of the reports as well. But the, the post office is not a sleepy benign use. The post office had 1,600 post office boxes, visited almost daily. It was 1,200 cars a day. It was a very intense use.
And there's different standards at different times when the uses are. We'll have our expert provide testimony. Mr. Goldman's providing testimony. I haven't heard anything come from his experts with respect to that, so I'd ask the board to disregard that.
Okay. Mr. Warnikin, do you have more questions? Because I understand you have...
I do.
... you want to present as well.
And I was trying to ask the questions when I got...
It sounded more like a speech there at the end, but just ask questions then.
With respect to the beer, storage coolers and the rooftop units, you indicated they're quiet. How, how quiet is that? Again, it's, I guess for the architect. Do you have a decibel level? Is there any cut sheets with respect to that?
Yes, I do. We have cut sheets on the VRF system. It's 65 decibels is the, kind of the mean average. Just to give you an idea, a comparable RTU rooftop unit has a decibel level of 88. So that's a pretty significant reduction in sound.
And what's that compared to like an outdoor, just a residential unit? What would the decibel levels on that be?
I'm not sure I know that or could, you know, comment on that.
What would you put the context of 66 decibels towards, just so the board and I can understand about how loud that is?
I think, I don't know that you can answer that question like that. I mean, it's very subjective. I'm not sure I could compare it to something. Yeah, I mean, the, the noise that's currently generated there by the units that are up there are, again, more in the 88 decibel levels. The equipment we're proposing to put on is 65 decibels. So we're reducing the...
Well, what's there is just regular heating and air conditioning for an office building, correct?
It was the heating and air conditioning for the post office, yeah.
Okay. The coolers and refrigeration and the stuff would be much, a larger capacity and would run continuously, do they not?
Yeah, compressors for a refrigerator would, yes.
Okay, and the compressor for just a regular office building or post office, that wouldn't run continuously?
Not sure, probably not.
Okay.
There's no, no, they're not. And just to clarify, there's no refrigeration compressors on the roof.
Okay. Well, then what are the compressors on the roof? Just the HVAC?
Yes, it's the condensers for the HVAC system. There's fans for exhaust, but no compressors.
Okay, and then are there compressors for the refrigeration system at all? Or how does that work?
Yes, there are.
Where do they go?
They are located down low in the, in the window wells and below the stair that leads down to the basement level.
Okay. That's all I've got for the, that's all I've got for the architect, I believe. I've got some Mr., questions for Mr. Jacomar, the traffic engineer? Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Just one question back to the architect's PowerPoint presentation. If we could put it back up, one of the outside pictures elevations. I just want to make sure. It looked like there was a sign up on the building. I just want to... Third, second row, second from the right. Number, just go, just past 23? 23. So what's the sign say in the corner?
Pardon?
The sign about available square feet for the building, just for the...
I'm sorry, say that again?
There's a sign in the corner on the picture of the building in the corner, left hand, top left-hand corner of the building. It says available square footage.
Yeah.
And what's that say? The square footage on it?
That sign?
Yes.
I have no idea. I mean, that's not any sign that we had anything to do with.
Okay, does it say available 11,000 square feet?
We'll stipulate that the sign says available 11,000 square feet. We've been through this now several times. We are not saying that the basement is not going to be occupied and it has a certain amount of feet. It just doesn't qualify as floor area under your ordinance.
Okay.
And then your standards under your ordinance are measured by floor area. I don't know how many other ways I can say that.
I think you've made your point, Mr. Warnikin.
I'm ready to move on. Again, I'm not trying to be argumentative. I just wanted to put it there. Mr. Jacomar, a couple of questions for you. We had looked at some of your reports. One of the items in your parking testimony, you had provided a report. You had testified that it was, the study was done February 24, 2016, but it was referenced in the document as February 13, 2016. Do you know which one's correct?
I can't tell you right now. I know it was a Saturday that we did the survey. I don't know. Are you referring to the date of the report or the date of the survey?
The date of the report referenced the date of the survey, and in that it stated it was February 13, 2016.
The survey?
The survey.
We have to check the calendar. It was a Saturday evening that we did it.
Okay. Just because the reason we had a question on that, you indicated that there was various parking spots open and available that evening. Does weather factor into that at all?
Yes, yes, yes. It was a Saturday, February 13, that we did the survey. The weather counts in the sense that, you know, if the weather is cold and there tend to be more people driving rather than walking. So the weather can affect this in two ways. It can increase the number of vehicle trips in a situation like this in a way a number of people are within walking or bicycling distance. So I can tell you, for instance, Princeton University, they do their parking surveys when it's cold because that's when they have the highest number of cars that they count.
And the same thing, it's holiday weekends. That have any impact on it?
Holiday weekends can have an impact, yes. And, you know, the schedule of the university has an impact, you know, when parents are in town and so on. Yes, but I think we have done several surveys over the past, several years, that tell us that there is reserved capacity downtown on a Saturday evening. Significant reserved capacity.
The only survey I saw in the file was the one in February. I know you had made some references to some studies or things you had done recently in May and July. Do you know if they had been submitted to the town?
Well, the May survey was done for the town by the town's consultant. Nelson and I got, did a detailed parking survey. I think they're still working on the study. They made a presentation, I think in May or June, where they presented these data. And as I mentioned in my testimony, I contacted them to understand exactly what happened. We then did an additional survey to kind of clarify this in July. And I just, we did not present it to the town. I just presented it at the meeting.
Okay, okay. So I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss something, so I hadn't been on file beforehand. When you did that clarification, did you reach out to the managers of the parking garage to find out if certain spaces were leased and not available for the public's use or anything along those lines?
We only surveyed the parking spaces that are publicly available. For instance, in the Halfish garage, there's the lower level that's public parking, and then there's the upper level that's reserved for employees, for monthly parkers, employees and residents. So there are very few spaces in a Chambers Street garage that are reserved for use. There are a few of them, but it's probably more in the range of maybe 20 spaces. And I don't know the exact number, but I remember seeing that. And in the Halfish garage, there are no reserved spaces, but there were, as I mentioned, there were spaces that were on, where there was some construction going on.
Okay.
And we should also add, excuse me, the municipal garage on Spring Street, where there are no reserved spaces.
When we talk about the loading dock, I guess there was a loading dock that used to be, excuse me, for the site that has been removed, correct?
The loading dock for the post office?
For the post office, correct.
Yeah, that's supposed to be removed, and I think it will be turned into sidewalk. But the architects and the engineer are the ones that can answer that more accurately. Because I was not involved in the design of the building itself.
Okay, then I'll go back possibly with that and I'll ask you a question. When you had done your parking calculations that were submitted in a report to the board, you based it upon the entire building of the post office, even though it wasn't all obviously used or actively being used, while you then used all of the space for the, that's being actively used for the proposed restaurant. Is that really a fair comparison? Shouldn't, if you're going to try to show what the comparable uses are, shouldn't you be showing what's actually being used versus space that wasn't actively being used? It gives an unfair comparison.
I disagree. You cannot just base this, your definition of active use versus non-active use on the fact whether there are people, you know, outside visitors or guests there. I think the post office did use the basement. That's what I was told. It was not used in a way where the restaurant is used. That is correct, in terms of the number of people that would be downstairs. But that's not the only criteria. You also have to remember that in, you know, the floor area in a post office is used in a different manner than the floor area in a restaurant. And you also have other factors. There's the turnover, that's very different. The post office turnover is much, much quicker. People stay, I don't know what it is, on average, you know, 10 minutes, 20 minutes at most, whereas the restaurant people stay much longer. So there are other variables that come into play. And I don't think it's fair to say that the basement was not actively used by the post office. It was maybe used more for storage. They had storage bins. They had lockers for the employees. That's what I was told, bathrooms. So it is used. It's used in a different manner. But it is part of the floor area that we would... You know, if you want to do a comparison according, and we did that in our report, according to the ordinance, we exclude the floor area for the basement. But we did, just to calculate it, do the calculation for the post office with the basement and the restaurant with the basement. And if you look at, if you want to use those ITE statistics, the post office has a parking demand that's at least twice as high compared to the restaurant on a per-thousand-square-foot basis. So...
They do, but the actual space being used, at least according to the plans, because there's been no testimony provided, but according to the plans and showing what was actively used and what's being proposed actively used, the restaurant is using a much higher square footage than the post office did.
Well, in both cases, they're being used. It's not because there are people in the basement in the restaurant, you know, and for the post office, there are more people and there's more activity. There's more turnover on the ground floor. So it's a different type of use. But the basic statistics tell us that the post office on a per-thousand-square-foot basis, whichever way you want to calculate it, has higher parking generation than a restaurant for the same amount of floor area. It's the gross floor area that we're using.
And what I'm saying is, wouldn't it be more correct to use the actual usable floor area than the gross floor area?
No, these studies are always done based on gross floor areas, whether the floor area is used.
I have to object.
And we can move on?
No, because, I mean, you keep...
It's the same question and answer, over and over again.
Asking the same question and...
It's for the different people for different aspects of the ordinance.
No, I really don't think...
No, this one question.
You keep asking the same question, at least with Mr. Jacomar. He's answered it a couple of times. I understand you still want to present your own witness this evening. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, well, then I'd suggest that you move along then with your questions.
I just want to just say to Mr. Jacomar, is the way you do a parking analysis based on what you think is fair or based upon the methodology set forth in an ordinance?
Every time we do a study in a municipality, we do it based on the ordinance that that particular municipality uses. So that's a key methodology, yes.
Okay, going to the traffic. Reviewing your report, you use the category as a quality restaurant. You use code 931 from the ITE when you calculated the restaurants. Is that correct?
I did, that may be correct. You're talking about traffic or parking?
Traffic.
Traffic. That may be correct, yes.
Okay, would you not consider this more of a high-turnover sit-down restaurant?
No. As you heard this evening, you know, one of the kind of, one of the differences between quality and high turnover is the duration that people stay. If you look at the ITE manual, they say high-turnover restaurants, high-turnover sit-down restaurants, people tend to stay an hour. And for quality restaurants, they tend to stay longer. And as you heard tonight, the average duration is one to one, and one hour to one hour and a quarter.
There are also a number of other factors with respect to cost, reservations, and different factors along those lines too. Whether it's part of a chain of, it has sister restaurants, correct?
Yeah, there are the factors, but I use the duration here as a key factor. And when it comes to parking, there's not a huge difference in the parking ratios for the sit-down restaurant versus quality restaurant.
But it does make a difference with respect to traffic generation?
It does, yes.
Okay. In your report, you also made certain assumptions with respect to the percentage of traffic to the restaurant that would be walkers. Is that based upon any formula?
It's an, I would say it's a professional judgment that I used. And I think it is a very conservative judgment for the downtown area here in Princeton, where you have a number of students, you know, and there's, you know, significant bicycle activity. There's quite a number of people that live, you know, within the immediate vicinity. I think 15% in that regard is conservative.
Okay, did you take any surveys of the existing restaurant that they have in downtown?
No, no. But we have done a significant amount of work in downtown. You know, we have looked at census statistics for various studies that we have done in the past. And I felt that 15% was a reasonable, conservative number.
Okay. You made a statement that you didn't think there'll be traffic impacts because there'll be less than 100 trips per direction.
No, that's not what I said. I said anything that's less than 100 is not considered a significant impact. And that's a kind of a standard that's used by various Department of Transportation. The Institute of Transportation Engineers also has suggestions that say that, you know, basically, to answer the question, when should somebody do detailed traffic impact analysis or not? And that 100 trips per direction is often used as a threshold.
And, but wasn't, isn't one of the other thresholds to analyze the first intersection in either direction regardless? And any location where there are 100 trips to...
No, not in this case. I mean, we could, if this was a suburban condition, you're talking about very suburban conditions, you would look maybe at the driveway that leads to that site, you know, where people are parking. We're not in that situation. People are not all driving to the site here. Most people, they know the area. They know that they can park in the area. You know, they can park in front of the restaurant, and they will park two blocks away, one block away, three blocks away.
Well, did you take any, into account in your analysis the fact that people might be circling looking for parking? Isn't it typical for somebody to, when they're coming to the restaurant, first come, drive to the restaurant, see if there's anything local right in the vicinity before they go to a garage and then start circling at that time?
Some people do. Some people drive straight to the parking lot. I mean, that's something that happens every day. Now, and these things happen with the post office. If you look at the traffic generation of the post office during peak hours, it's higher.
Right, it could be higher.
It is higher.
But the, but not on Friday and Saturday nights when the restaurant is at the peak.
Correct, but if you look at the, the typical hours that are being analyzed are also the peak hours, morning peak, afternoon peak, when the traffic conditions are at their worst.
But without doing a study, how do we know what the worst traffic conditions are?
I'm old enough to know that. I mean, we know that downtown Princeton, traffic conditions peak in the morning around nine, eight, nine. In the evening, they peak at four, five.
You say you know that, but the public who want to review this application and look at it, aren't they entitled to get a study to show what, when the conditions are? Isn't the board entitled to that?
Mr. Warnikin, I think you're arguing with Mr. Jacomar now. So if you have questions, please ask them. But at this point, you're repeating the questions and you're arguing because you don't like his answers, so...
That wasn't a repeated question. That was something that we were going with the first time. Just one second. That's it for the cross-examination for now. So I don't know if closing statements or I'll wait for that.
I just want to redirect one question to George. George, you said that the post office generated much greater levels of traffic during peak hour. Do you have any sense at all of what that traffic trips for the post office would have been?
I don't know specifically what it was for this post office. When I mentioned that, I base it on the traffic generation statistics that we have from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, and that is for a very suburban condition. So we have ratios for post offices in a very suburban condition and for restaurants in a very suburban condition. And during the peak hours, the, and I can give you the ratios here, the post office has more intense traffic generation. And that's on the per-thousand-square-feet of floor area, gross floor area. We use the gross floor area, whether there are people sitting there or not, or whether it's used for storage or bathrooms or kitchen, whatever it is, we take always the gross floor area in consideration.
Right, so you wouldn't subtract out from the restaurant the area where the garbage is stored? Nobody's sitting there, but it's part of the operation? Okay, that's it.
All right. Before we move along, I wanted to ask, I believe there are representatives from Palmer Square here, whether they wanted to cross-examine. Could you come forward and give your name, please?
Hi, I just want to say something. Lori Raybon, Vice President, Palmer Square. I have no intention on cross-examining anybody. I have had the opportunity to meet via phone with David...
Mr. Van Oostermaat, I should have sworn you in, but when you started...
Mr. Dornigan, sorry, I should have sworn you in, but when you started...
Okay, sorry.
Would you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
I've had an opportunity to speak via telephone with who we presume to be our new neighbors, so welcome to Palmer Square and the neighborhood. David set up a meeting with Adam, Matt, Eric. I had my team there. I do want to put on the record some of the discussion items that we have, because they are important, both during construction phases and ongoing operations. I think that at the particular time that we met, I think we can agree, we all pledged to work together and do the best that we can for the Palmer Square community. While I would have liked the post office to have remained with us, it has not, so we will do the neighborly thing. So I have some issues that I'd like from that meeting just to read into the record if I could, and then I do have a couple of questions regarding our omnibus agreement and how that's going. There are some landscaping items and things like that that I just want to make sure we take care of. So the points that we did discuss, and I'll start from a construction perspective, and understandably, this team has not really gotten to the construction phase, so they're not able to answer these directly, but they have pledged to work with us. Obviously, we're in a very small neighborhood. I have 188 hotel rooms. I have multiple residences, both on Palmer Square West from a condo, as well as our new residences at Palmer Square. Construction, vehicles, noise, disruption to the flow of traffic in the square, all these are very concerning items to us, as well as the construction timetable and the ability to make allowances and take into consideration special events that go on in town, come university, jazz feast, reunion, graduation period, things like that, how we'll be able to work around those schedules. As well, we talked about design issues. We understand from really going through some of the details with the team regarding the new area where, and forgive me if I'm wrong, the mash is going to be taken in and out, or grain delivered. That area of sidewalk is going to be expanded upon. They have, you know, talked about the beautification of it, doing some lighting changes and things like that. One of the things that we discussed with them was, any type of lighting changes, we have guest rooms, the windows are right there, we're going to need to take that into consideration. David had come up with a couple of ideas. Shedding lighting, something, I've never heard the term. Shielding, shielding. One of the other things that does need to be taken into consideration, right along that sidewalk area at the top of the stairs, that is the boiler access area, so if I ever have issues in the basement of the hotel, that is where we have to actually secure the building and dig out that brick and get to my boilers, which are in the basement. So that'll be something to be talked about. We talked about the Palmer Square green entry. I'm wondering if there are any new easements that are going to be granted for the application, or is it just a continuation of the ongoing easements?
It's just a continuation of the ongoing easements. Essentially, the new easement that was approved by the township basically changed a clause that was in the easement that's been there for the post office since 1933, I think, maybe 34. And, and there was a clause in that easement that granted the easement, but said if the post office ever sold the property, the easements would extinguish.
Mm-hmm.
And so the result of that was you had a building that was built on the property line with a stair, the entrance stairway was not on your property, and so that was a bad thing, because the only thing you could do would be to tear down the historic building and build a smaller building. And the historic trust would not allow you to tear down. So after much consideration, the easement that was essentially amended to remove that termination provision, so that the easement did not terminate when the post office was sold, but it would terminate if the building's ever torn down, right? So you can't tear that building down and build a big skyscraper and still get the benefit of the easement. If you, if you tear the building down, you got to do everything inside your property. But as long as that historic building is there, all owners, subsequent owners of the historic building will have the right under the easement to have the stairs and the window will, that have been there since 1933, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to daily operations, we did discuss and I expressed concern over live bands and what kind of noise generation that will be. So I think that's one of the ongoing discussions that we'll have. Like, talk about, I'm not sure what the name of the grease transport is, or what that impact that may have to the exterior of the building, as well as the grease removal. Trash was explained to us, as was recycling, delivery. I applaud you for the photographs of all of the trucks on the square and the loading zones being taken up. We have filed multiple complaints with the Department regarding the multitude of large trucks, both with idle engines, as well as only loading zones on Palmer Square, East in particular. Because a lot of times what's happening is they're pulling in, they're hitting the trucks there for a long period of time while they deliver on Witherspoon Street, and it's my understanding that that's happening because there was a reduction in the loading zone, number of loading zones on Witherspoon, therefore the drivers can't find space. So they are pulling up, and most of the biggest problem for myself from a hotel perspective, having been there for 30 years, is they pull up into the front of the hotel on the unloading side, where my guests are supposed to be able to, with each, check in and check out of the hotel, and they're parking there, and as my understanding is, once they have their actual place, they're allowed an hour, but they're given a grace of up to two hours. I have observed some of these people going to having lunch. We do have photographs that we have shared with others, but I think based on this application, one of the things that's happened is the engineering department has agreed to come out to the site, they're actually coming Monday, on seven, Nina and her team are coming, meeting with a few of us, and they're going to be looking at the loading zones in Palmer Square, people parking in the fire alleyways in a couple of different locations, so they'll be working with my Director of Security, Director of Operations, and hopefully you can make it better for, for all of us. Eighteen-wheelers do come in, so trucks are coming in, they are approaching deliveries. They, I happen to have my employee document that was on perspective, but I have tenants on Palmer Square, and they don't have a choice but to take deliveries from these large vehicles. For the most part, they are in the early morning hours, and it is well coordinated. So they are back to the rep, they should be speaking to the staff, they're a little loud, but... And really, lastly, well, actually, two points. In the photograph that showed the 11,000 square feet that was pointed out, below that is a green sign that says where the Nassau Inn motor entrance for checking is, and it has been there forever. My sign being taken down, here, oh, right, you can go back a couple of... Right there, that's my sign that's been there. I don't know, I can't see where that is. Okay, is that working?
No.
Swap out.
Take this one. Take this one.
Okay. Yeah, now I'm loud again. I'll try and whisper. If we see that green sign below the CBRE sign that says it's available, that is the directional signage that has been there forever, pointing people to the motor entrance of Okay, well, we can talk about that, but I just want to point that out, that that has been there regardless of it being the post office or whomever.
Hopefully, the sign counts to your sign area, not ours.
And lastly, my, my question would be, as the stewards of the Green and Tiger Park, Palmer Square management is charged with maintaining all of the landscaping, beautification, snow removal, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, for Palmer Square, and I'm not sure how that's going to work with a new person in the post office.
Did the, can I ask you, did the post office contribute to...
They did not contribute, but we maintained.
Yeah, no, I know. Okay.
And that's really my question, how are we, what? Exactly. So we would like to discuss that as well.
Sure.
We don't know anything about it, so send us what you got.
It's, it's a new issue for us, so, yeah, we'll talk.
We asked, we asked your former person about that and never got anything. We don't know anything about it.
You and I are having dialogue, so that's all that matters.
Yep.
With regard to the parking garages, I have not hired a traffic consultant or anything like that, but I, I do want to just make sure that while a separate use for the post office is coming in and, you know, potentially using our private garages, we have, as Mr. Jacomar knows, because he represented us as well, all of the spaces in the Hullfish and Chambers garage were part of our planning board applications over the past several years and have been dedicated to our particular uses, and I don't want that in any way to be compromised, good word, compromised. And that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I can only say the good news on the construction issues is that because of the nature of our work, it's almost 95% indoors, you know, we're, we're basically preserving the shell, it's just that glass box, and then everything else is inside. So to the extent you have to do anything, it's going to be at a minimum.
Right, but there's always staging and so on.
Absolutely, and we're going to work together on that.
Now, I think that at this point, I'd like to open it up to the public. Did you have an, an expert that was, who was going to testify before we get to the public part?
Yes, whenever you'd like, if you'd like it after the public, before the public, which is your preference.
How long?
Ten, fifteen minutes.
All right, let's, why don't we do that right now?
Okay.
Sir, would you state your name and address for the record first?
Okay, my name is Gordon Meth, last name is spelled M-E-T-H, and my business address is 100 Hanover Road, Cedar Knolls, New Jersey.
And now, Mr. Meth will swear you in. If you'd raise your hand, you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
And could we hear your credentials, please, before you...
Certainly. I have a bachelor's and master's degree in civil engineering from the University of Waterloo. I have been a licensed professional engineer since 1993, licensed in New Jersey since 2000. I am a licensed professional planner within the state of New Jersey, which I acquired through examination on land use law rather than just by, shall we say, retroprosity. I am, I have two certifications, one is from the Transportation Professional Certification Board, one is professional traffic operations engineer, the other is professional transportation planner, both of which I received through examination and experience. I have been qualified as an expert in civil and, and traffic engineering in front of over 60 land use boards in front of, in 60 municipalities of New Jersey and 14 different counties, including Mercer. I have never had the privilege of testifying here before.
That's true. Thank you very much, we accept your credentials.
Thank you.
Mr. Meth, you're testifying in your capacity as a traffic engineer, correct?
I'm sorry?
You're testifying as an expert in traffic engineering, is that correct?
I am. I also, some of my testimony may cross the line into the area of professional planning, that's why I emphasize I have a professional planning license. However, I restrict my, my, I restrict my activity in that to interpreting parking and traffic ordinances and those items that affect civil engineering plans and C-variances, not use variances. I don't know if...
All right, so you want, you want the board to accept Mr. Meth as an expert in traffic engineering and land use planning, is that correct?
Yes, in that extent, yes.
Okay with the board?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Meth, why don't you just kind of get right into your testimony?
Certainly. We, I was engaged to perform an independent review of the traffic and parking data provided as part of this application. The, and what the proposed use based on my review consists of is the conversion of a post office building into, into a restaurant, which I categorizes more casual dining, just based on the testimony provided, of 12,976 square feet and 297 seats. Some of the, there are differentiators within traffic engineering between, shall we say, fine dining and casual dining, both Urban Land Institute's Shared Parking Talk about it, and, and the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual and Parking Generation Manual, they both discuss it at length. There's a few differentiating factors. One of them really has to do with a quality restaurant or fine dining. They describe it as a restaurant that you generally need reservations on, has durations greater than an hour, and a, and is not part of a chain. High turnover sit-down restaurant usually includes a significant, can often include a significant bar component, has a dining duration of about an hour, and no reservations are needed. I heard testimony tonight from the operators that they estimate their beverage sales at about 40%, or alcohol sales at 40% of their business enterprise, and that their average duration about in the range of 60 to 75 minutes. I did not hear any discussion of reservations, so in my opinion, this would constitute a casual dining restaurant. What, what's interesting is Urban Land Institute and the Institute of Transportation Engineers' Parking Generation Manual, the numbers are almost the same for both restaurants for parking, but not so much for traffic, okay? The key is, you know, a restaurant has a certain number of people in it at a given time, it doesn't matter if they're there a long time or a short time, they're all parked. And that's about the same. What, what is a differentiator is that when you have a high, a, a casual dining restaurant or a high turnover sit-down restaurant, people are in and out quicker, so there's more trips. There are a few issues that I saw with this application that are worthy of discussion. I will try to be brief given the hour, and I know there's already been a lot of dialogue and discussion. First and foremost has to do with traffic impacts and, and discussion of it. The, first of all, when one switches from quality restaurant to high turnover sit-down restaurant, the trip generation in any given hour can increase by a factor of up to 40%, particularly in the, particularly in the PM peak hour between the two restaurants, or, and, or 30%, 40% for the 24-hour. Now that changes the dynamic of what the board has seen so far with regard to traffic generation. There is also some debate about... There is also some debate about the size of the post office and whether the basement in its entirety should count. ITE generally distinguishes basements if they're greater than 6 and 1/2 feet. They're counted. If it's less than it, they're not counted. One way or another, it's clear looking at the floor plans that about 1,000 square feet of the basement was actively used by the basement. In the basement area, the rest was dead area. So, I have an exhibit that I can distribute, and I have copies, 20 copies, which shows a comparison of trip generation for a 7,600 square foot post office to a casual dining, high turnover, sit-down restaurant of approximately 13,000 square feet. So, I'll have Chad distribute it, and then I guess I'll identify it for the record. When you're ready, I'll describe 01. If you're ready, Madam Chair, I'll... 01 is a table. At the bottom, it says FRA with a date of 8/3/2017. That's for, I didn't identify my employer, that's Fournier Robinson Associates. And it is a table that has a heading of time period, existing casual dining difference and difference percentage. Now, there was also discussion of 100, and there was also discussion of 100 trips as a number for which significant traffic occurs. The only place that is written into regulation, to my knowledge, in the state of New Jersey, actually, there are numbers written into various county codes, but is the access code for the state of New Jersey, which regulates traffic on state highways and uses that number for analyzing it. When it comes to traffic impacts in this area, you have a very unique characteristic. You have Palmer Square, which has a one-way circulation pattern with a one-way, shall we say, inbound feed, feeding road off of Nassau Street. And it all, shall we say, terminates in an intersection with Hullfish Street that is directly across from the garage entrance for the Hullfish Street Garage with a stop sign and a fairly well-marked crosswalk for pedestrians to cross to. A stop-controlled intersection has a lot less carrying capacity for traffic than a state highway. Furthermore, given the configuration of the proposed application where there is no proposed parking, you have about 40 on-street parking spaces on Palmer Square and then various garages. I would, let me digress for one second. There is the only place, there is one study that was performed by Donald Shoup and published in a publication called "The High Cost of Free Parking", where he actually, through research, established that in downtowns, it's common for 30% of the traffic to be circulating looking for on-street parking. And what I would expect the common behavior of this to be, where people will try to park as close to their destination as possible when they drive, is to circulate through Palmer Square. And if they can establish there's no parking, then proceed and find alternative parking locations. Now, what, all of whom, that basically puts a large amount of traffic at that one-stop-controlled intersection. Now, I'm sure that this board has heard about the Duncan Knowles case law and how as-of-right developments cannot be denied on the basis of off-track traffic impacts. And there is no question that Palmer Square and Hullfish Street is off-track to this property. However, that, in my experience, has never precluded boards from considering the need to mitigate traffic impacts and assign fair share obligations to applicants. For instance, that intersection may need to be converted into an always-stop or some kind of traffic control or some other mechanism once all this extra traffic is added. So, I really do think it is relevant to look at traffic. Furthermore, my experience is that the downtown of Princeton does get fairly active on weekday evenings, particularly closer to the weekend, and weekend evenings, when restaurant traffic does peak and post office traffic would not. So, I do believe that it is relevant to get specific traffic analysis and numbers looked at instead of just dismissing them out of hand.
Mr. Meth, you talked a little bit about parking moving to other areas. Can you explain what you mean by that, like parking moving to other neighborhoods?
Well, okay, I will also clarify that I did have discussions with the managers of the Hullfish and Chambers Street garages because just to ascertain the vacancy level and explain it, I will tell you that when the survey that was presented to the board was conducted on February 13, 2016, I checked records, it was President's Day weekend, and it was 10 degrees Celsius was the low that night. And that, so, it is not necessarily what I would consider typical conditions for this downtown.
In your opinion, would that negatively impact the traffic that's out, that there might not be as many people?
To the extent that people may be inclined to not want to walk around downtown to go from place to place, I would suspect so. The other thing that was conveyed to me, and I realize in some respects it's hearsay, but it helps explain why the full sign comes out, is that between the 1,008 parking spaces in those two garages, there are 672 people with monthly rentals that can come any time of day. So, they routinely put out the full sign and don't allow new people in and except residents at a certain point when they get close to capacity. Furthermore, the hotel has, they have to leave spaces for the hotel itself. The hotel's website actually advertises that you do not need to have previous arrangements for parking. You can park there whenever you show up. And sometimes there are events at the hotel where they have to reserve 50-odd spots or so for events that may happen at some later time. So, the key is, it's not uncommon for the lot to have spaces, lots to have spaces left within them while having the full sign outside effectively closing them off. And the reality is, most, they do not assign particular spots, except in a few exceptions. And the main reason is, they want to oversell, you know, the monthly parkers. They go off experience. They don't go off making sure that every monthly parker has a specific spot. That is best practice with parking. It helps share the load. It means, because otherwise you end up with a lot of vacant spaces for no good reason. But that's the one condition that helps explain why there may have been spots in those garages that weren't necessarily available. I will also say that the study quoted that they looked at parking within 750 feet of this site. It may have been as the crow flies, but the Spring Seat Garage is at least a 1,000-foot walk to this restaurant. Now, there's no provisions in the CB zone, but other zones within Princeton have a maximum distance for off-street parking under the same control of the owner that can be considered of 400 feet. And part of that comes from an old publication, I believe, called Parking by Wenton Levinson, where they actually index how far people are willing to walk based on the size of the urbanized area they're within. And for an area such as Princeton, their number is 300 to 400 feet for an average walking distance of how far people will walk. There's different precedences. People will walk further for work trips and into transit. They will walk further for special events. But, and otherwise, they'll walk further when they're in a much bigger urban area. But people, I guess, there's a law of diminishing return. So, now, the other issue is the fact that the parking ordinance for downtown, and I believe Mr. Jacomar explained it very well. Why is the number so low compared to ITE? And I have the ITE numbers to go over it. But I will tell you that Urban Land Institute says that a restaurant of this size needs about 36 to 39 parking spaces for employees alone on a weekend and 260 parking spaces is best practices. And I will admit that's in a suburban setting. But then why does the ordinance only require 33 spots for a 13,000-square-foot restaurant? Well, if the basis of analysis was ensuring adequate parking in a midday, which was the peak for Princeton, then it really would be probably indexed more on the case of providing for employees and serving the people who are already in the business area for the restaurant patrons. And then utilizing, making best use of the parking resources that are vacated by those businesses at night and weekends.
Mr. Meth, what's your opinion about the need for parking variance for this application?
Well, I will say this much. Based on the reports I've read, the post office has been relatively unchanged since about 1933. That would mean it would predate zoning, so it would not have a parking requirement. It would have a grandfathered lack of requirement for parking, which means the existing parking is effectively zero. One has to question if the change of use triggers the need for a, to revisit that for the new use. Now, I will, I will actually, you know, I'm not an attorney. That's a legal opinion and judgment. I will say that there is floor area being added vis-à-vis the mezzanine area inside the building, a modification. And I saw other provisions of the code for the CB zone, which talks about that existing buildings that are being altered, if there's any addition, then has to be treated separately. So, to that extent, well, it's not my place to say it. I can only identify what the ordinance says. But I would believe, just based on those two provisions, that there is a parking variance as part of this application.
Okay. Can you touch a little bit about the ordinances that we discussed with respect to the CB zone and the ratios of the parking?
Certainly. The CB zone, when I looked at it, with regard to this application, had some controls within it and has had for some time. One is a floor area ratio variance, or, sorry, limitation of 1.5, all right? And it also has a provision that restaurants or food servicing establishments are restricted to being 10,000 square feet or less, or if they are more than that, they become a conditional use. And then the number-one condition is that they have to provide all the bulk requirements, including parking. And it specifically mentions parking. Now, what I will tell you is that in the ordinance, the current definition of floor area in the ordinance was revised in 2015. And what it was, and the intent, the stated purpose of it was to unify the interpretation across the community. And what that meant was that basements were no longer considered floor area, as you've heard on two nights already in great detail, the discussion thereof. What, so, now, one has to question whether that intended, when that happened, to, shall we say, lift or elevate the controls within the CB zone. I don't know. You know, only the governing body knows when they adopted it. But the unintended consequence is that if basement area, basement area becomes a free add-on over any controls that are in your ordinance based on size or floor area, okay? That's the consequence of that change. And furthermore, my understanding is, the interpretation is that because of the wording of the ordinance, that there is no parking requirement for anything in basement areas now whatsoever. And I know that's been discussed tonight too. But the point is, the basement, anything that's defined as not a story becomes non-floor area and therefore, shall we say, is additional and over and above whatever controls already exist in the zone. That are defined based on floor area specifically.
And then can you just run through some of your, the traffic trips that your generation? I know you talked about the numbers generally, and we passed that handout out. But you did a comparison, what you think, and kind of go over the number of trips that you think are generated above what used to be there?
Certainly. And I will clarify that these are numbers based on non-adjusted for mode split. They are based on car trips in a suburban setting, so there could be some adjustments. I heard some testimony about the census being used as a basis for deductions. In my experience, the census only counts work trips, not trips to restaurants. So, maybe it applies to employees, but I don't know if it would apply to patrons of restaurants or a post office. However, one of the, some of the key areas at the key times, the weekday PM peak hour trip, the highest hour in the evening peak hour for the proposed use, the casual dining restaurant would generate 240 trips versus 111 for the post office, recognizing they're not even going to be the same hour. The post office will be more business time peak versus, or early afternoon peak versus a later evening peak. The Saturday peak hour would be 45 trips for the post office versus 183 for the restaurant. So, we're talking changes of the order of 138 trips or 129 trips for the PM peak hour, just based on that math, all of which would be expect, or a good portion of which could be expected to be trying to make turns at the stop sign at Palmer Square East and Hullfish Street.
Based upon those increases, do you believe a traffic study should, would be justified for the board to look at before they made any decision on the application?
Yes, I do.
Why? Could you just elaborate a bit?
As I stated earlier, we know there is a, one very critical intersection in this area that has limited traffic capacity. And we are talking about what is, would normally be considered a substantial change, just based on the numbers, notwithstanding the fact that a stop-controlled intersection may have a lot less capacity than a state highway or county roadway that would be controlled more by traffic signals than stop signs. And the whole point of the traffic analysis is not a question of, you know, shall we say, a reason to deny an application, which is not legal for an as-of-right development as, based on Duncan Knowles case law. But it's more about identifying impacts so the board can make an informed decision, particularly when it's coming up with conditions for approval. And I do believe that if one looks at that intersection, they will probably have some recommendations, such as converting it to an always-stop instead of a two-way stop, or putting in traffic signal control depending on the volume of pedestrians mixing with cars.
But you can't determine that without the study being...
Not without the numbers.
Okay. And then finally, do you have any opinions or thoughts with respect to the loading and the truck traffic and the loading dock?
Ah, yes. The other provision that, shall we say, went away with the basement. The CB zone requires a loading dock for any build, one loading space for any non-residential use between 10,000 and 25,000 square feet. Because this is less than 10,000 square feet, it no longer needs a loading space. But you did hear testimony about how many different trucks will be coming to this site and what frequency. You have no current loading space on Palmer Square East or Palmer Square, and it is beyond the purview of this board to create one on Public Street. That's up to the governing body. There was discussion that the governing body may be considering putting one in or wanting to. But I guess what, the difficulty is, how can, or a board has to consider that, well, if we can't control it and make it happen, how do we know it's going to be there in perpetuity? I also say this. When it comes to approving it, there's been a fair amount of testimony from the operator of the current facility, current restaurant, and I realize it is being relocated, or the Triumph Brewery. The space they're vacating could become another restaurant, the same use. And furthermore, I mean, my experience is that approval boards approve the use, not the specific operator. So, to the extent that there is testimony about operations, one has to consider that when this is approved as a restaurant, if it changes hands, if the Triumph Brewery moves on to another location because they've outgrown the space for whatever reason, you may not necessarily be... necessarily be, um, the, 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 um, all, all the, shall we say, um, considerations that the board would, uh, base their decision on may, may be subject to change within the context of the zoning ordinances and laws of, of, of Princeton. So, the, for that perp, for that purpose, I think, I, I, my experience is, the board needs to carefully consider not the user that's in front of you, but the user that could replace them one day.
Okay. And then just finally, going back to the possibility of the existing Triumph Brew Pub, a new restaurant going in there, so that, there, there had been some testimony about the parking garages and there's enough parking for that in, in the current state. But we, you've got to look at the cumulative effect, what that parking is, plus the new restaurant, if in fact somebody else goes in there.
Well, I think the board, even the board's experts' letters talked about the discrepancy between the, the study currently conducted and its parking availability and what was presented to the board. And if there is no parking availability and a use comes in that does generate a couple of hundred, demand for a couple hundred cars in an area that has 1,900 parking spaces from the testimony I heard in total, and, um, and that starts adding to the flow, you could, you could expect to see spillover into adjacent neighborhoods for on-street parking and maybe a need to have to restrict that parking. Zoning controls in the first place were, based on that book I read, uh, high-cost free parking, were really instituted to protect residential streets from parking for non-residential uses.
Okay. And, and the neighboring, uh, streets, what do you think it might spill on, are you talking like John Street or?
Uh, they would be whatever, whatever the next block is. I, I have to admit, I haven't done a thorough study of every street by street beyond the downtown core.
Okay. Um, I think that's it for the direct testimony for Mr. Meth.
I had just a couple of short questions. I noticed when you talked about the temperature in February, you said it was 10 centigrade?
I'm sorry, if I said that, I meant Fahrenheit, it was.
Okay, I just was curious, because that'd be kind of a warm day.
Well, not warm, that's about 50 degrees.
50 degrees.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
And again, the-
I just left Canada for a trip, so.
And so the walk, you talked about the walk to the Spring Street Garage, did you measure that using the alleyway right there that goes straight to the Spring Street Garage? Or you went all around circuitous?
I follow, I followed the public streets, so I follow Hullfish.
Cause there's a very widely-used walkway that goes right from basically our front door, right across and walks right directly to Spring Street. So it may be a little shorter than you thought.
Okay.
Okay.
If there's an appropriate easement for that, yes.
And I noticed you, you cited Dunkin' Donuts twice, Dunkin' Donuts in New Jersey versus Township in North Brunswick, 193, New Jersey Super 513, appellate division case 1984, which is sort of the seminal case on this, right? And it, and I think, I heard you say, and I think you would agree, that that case says there's really no authority to deny site plan because of anticipated traffic from a permitted use.
I, I would agree with that. I think that what, 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 uh, what that law effectively says is that when the municipality zones the land, it takes responsibility for ensuring the infrastructure is there, whether it's there or not.
Right. And just again, in your professional experience, is typically a traffic study focused on sort of peak hour, which, and I know in my experience has been weekday morning and weekday PM peak hour? Is that sort of typical for a traffic study?
Typical for a traffic study is to focus on, on the, um, confluence of, um, of impact between the site and street traffic. And oftentimes for retail-like uses and restaurants, it always includes Saturdays, in my experience.
Okay. And when you, and so when you compare a flo, a new flow of traffic on a Saturday night, you would have to judge that against the background traffic, right?
Correct.
And so when you're looking at a weekday peak hour and you're looking at the post office-generated traffic, you may have a much higher flow of traffic at a weekday peak hour in downtown Princeton.
Well, I, I guess probably the easiest thing to say is this, my professional craft, we are sometimes blessed, sometimes cursed in the fact that we base all our decisions based on data and information. And the, the, the key is this, we, you were correct in one part, we, in, in the first part, we have to measure the background flow and superimpose our traffic based on that and other potential growth. So, the, the reality is, I could speculate all day on maybes and what-ifs and, you know, that sort of thing and make suppositions, but that's not how I've been trained, that's not what my craft is all about.
Okay. Now, on your chart, you, you had at the top of the post office column, 7,598 square feet.
Correct.
Is that based upon the ordinance definition?
It, no, it's based on the, the script footage of the, the, uh, used space in the post office according to the architectural plans. So there was 1,037 square feet in the basement that I looked at that, uh, was used as, um, break room and restrooms. And, and, um, the, and the rest of it was the gross area of the, the story above.
So when, so when you do a traffic study for a typical office building, if they have a, um, a file room where they just have files, you don't, you exclude that from your calculations?
Well-
Or you just do that for the post office?
If one reads the definitions of what ITE says and does, um, and how it works, basements in particular are mentioned to be included only if they exceed six and a half feet in height. Um, the, uh, and what I would say is, if I'm trying to, to determine the anticipated traffic from a site, I don't base it on i, if there's, shall we say, area not being utilized for the appropriate purpose or, or, and, or underutilized, it's not appropriate to generate traffic for it, no matter what the circumstances is. So if I had vacant office space and I was trying to predict trips from it and that vacant office space was permanently vacant, I would not occupy it with a use.
And were you aware that when the post office was in use was prior to the change in the FAR, so that the actual ordinance FAR floor area of the post office was actually the main floor, the mezzanine and the basement? And it's under the new ordinance that this proposed use actually is under the new FAR ordinance, so it's actually half the FAR?
My recollection reviewing the previous ordinance was that basement area wouldn't count if it was mechanical or storage area. So I believe, I, I'm not, I'm not certain that's, that, that, that was, uh, correct phrasing. Furthermore, I also noticed this application includes adding extra floor area in a mezzanine that didn't exist before.
Did you calculate the reduction in floor area that's results from removing the canopy, which under the ordinance is defined as floor area? The space under the outdoor canopy over the truck court?
I didn't specifically calculate that, no.
All right. That's all I had. Tom O'Shea did a, the calculation you were looking for, so if you want him to tell you what that calculation was, he's-
I just have a couple of redirect questions for Mr. Meth first, if I might. Uh, Mr. Meth, I know we talked about the Dunkin' Donuts case and you asked a question on that, but your opinion, the traffic study is important because it, it's what the, uh, planning board would use to base and determine what, if any, conditions would be appropriate to put on the applicant, which is permitted under Dunkin' Donuts.
Well, Dunkin' Donuts doesn't speak to mitigations or fair share obligations. Um, municipal land use law does and permits it. Uh, sorry, for the record, Gordon Meth, sorry, I don't know if you got that. Um, but yes, that, Mike's, the Dunkin' Donuts case law does not speak to assigning, um, fair share obligations for improvement, required improvements to facilitate it, and municipal land use law does allow municipalities to get, to, uh, um, if they have appropriate ordinances to assign fair share obligations or to understand the impacts.
And then you believe a traffic study would help to be able, the board to be able to help determine what impacts might be, because it gives that background baseline that Mr., uh, that, that was raised?
I do. I, I really, I, let's put it this way, I, in my professional opinion, looking at the, the roadway circumstance that could be impacted by this application, I think you have a one, one very critical location that, at, at a minimum that needs to be looked at, and that would be Palmer Square East and Hullfish Street, that intersection.
Palmer Square East and Hullfish is, would clearly be an off-track improvement, would it not?
I would agree with that, yes.
And you said you had to have the appropriate ordinances, does that really mean that you have to have a transportation improvement district ordinance that's been based on a municipal study to assure a fair share contribution?
That would be a legal opinion, but that's not my experience.
Okay, does Princeton have that ordinance?
I have not reviewed that, but I will tell you that I have, I, I, I believe that if you look at, there's often fair share obligations required for new developers for generic transportation and sidewalk and sewer improvements in most ordinances.
And typically, when you're talking about a permitted use, the usual situation is there's a driveway for cars to go in and out of that suburban-type use. And isn't that what they're talking about when they talk about making sure you have safe and adequate ingress and egress?
Um, I, 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 I never mentioned safe and adequate ingress and egress, so I don't know, uh, the context, but I would agree that that's, that that usually affects a driveway, yes.
And that's where the mitigation would be, to make sure that you can get in and out of the property, but we don't have a driveway. We're in the middle of a downtown.
Uh, I don't believe I testified that a mitigation was needed for a driveway.
Okay. Thank you.
Let me point out that it's just about 11 o'clock, which is when we normally end our, if we have to go on with this application to another date, then we'll need to talk about this, Mr. Golden. We haven't had the public testimony yet, and, um, I don't know how many members of the public are here to speak to it.
Yes, can we find out if there are other folks from the public that wanted to speak?
All right, how many, how many of the people here came to speak? One, two?
Yeah, I guess you got a few.
Can, can we also get that, uh, answer?
Sorry?
Can we also get the answer that, um, that I was told that we were going to have?
Well, we can't do all of these things in the next 10 or 15 minutes, so tell me what, what you want to do. Do you want to push on or, I don't, I'm not sure the board members want to.
I, I have a feeling we can't possibly finish, so I think we should try to find a date in, that works for folks.
Uh, I think the public meeting will, will each speak two minutes or something, so.
But I, there are issues that have been raised that, that people want to speak, speak to from, I guess, all the parties who've spoken to. Yes, we haven't heard, we haven't heard from Brian Stankis yet, and, um, we haven't actually heard from our staff commenting on these, on the jurisdiction issue even, so, um, let's say Ms. Catronio is not here tonight, Keeper of our Calendar.
I, I think though, Mr. Sol, correct me if I'm wrong, did, uh, Ms. Catronio provide some information about, you know, what the schedule looks like in September?
Yeah, and it's not good.
I, I, that's what I thought, but.
But we're almost done.
Our next regularly scheduled meeting is September 4th.
We'll take it.
We, we have five other applications, or the 14th, I'm sorry, um, that are also timing out that we're going to need to deal with in one way or another. I know Eileen was working on getting a special meeting on the 28th, but I don't think she's confirmed that yet with everybody, um, so.
Well, why don't we, I think it's always good right now, why don't we try to get dates? Cause rather, we could all appear or say, right?
Okay. The first, the first meeting?
The 28th would, would be the next, would be a special meeting where we could carry this to, if we have a quorum.
No, September.
September 28th.
How many of you can do that?
I can.
What do you view as a special meeting in addition to the regular, to the two meetings?
Well, we only have one meeting in September. The, the problem was there's some holidays that fall early in September, so, and we meet on Thursdays. So we have a regularly scheduled meeting on the 14th, and we have a whole bunch of applications that we're going to try to move around and deal with as many as we can. We had thought we might be able to add an additional meeting in September, which would be the 28th. Um, our next regular meeting after that is October 5th.
Anyway, it would have to be this, this same group, how many of you could do it?
September?
I, it's a no for me.
I can do it.
So, I'm sorry.
Jenny, were you a yes?
No, I can't.
We got one. Wanda, Gail?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I heard, that's why I'm, I only had one yes, which was Julie, I think. Dwayne?
Yes.
You're good, okay.
Yeah, Gail and I, and, and Mildred, so, let's, can we tentatively say it'll be the 28th then?
Yeah, it sounds, let's see.
And, and then we'll have-
If there's six members, that's a quorum.
Yeah. We'll have some answers to all of these things, then.
We're going to hear the public right now.
I think, let's see, how it, how long do the people who've come to speak want? We generally allow two to three minutes.
Two minutes.
Two or three minutes is sufficient for them to speak.
All right, since they've sat here, shall we hear them and then we'll, okay. Suprell?
Uh, my name is Linda Suprell. I want to say hello to, uh, Mayor Trotman. It's a pleasure to see you again. Can you, everyone can hear me? And to Mr. Bridgen, pardon?
You have to be sworn in.
Yeah, Mrs. Suprell, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Um, I think, I want to thank the, all the board for their outstanding work, because I know this is very important. Uh, may I just add, I'm currently a commissioner on the Princeton Housing Authority. I was formerly, uh, um, on the board of the Affordable Housing in the borough. Uh, I have only two concerns. My main concern is parking. I recently moved to, uh, Palmer Square, and I'm very concerned about not only people who live there, but of our very close neighbors in the Witherspoon-Jackson neighborhood. Uh, I formerly lived, formerly lived in that area, and even before this, um, proposal, however notable it may be, was discussed, parking was a huge issue. And, uh, the people who live in that area can hardly, uh, walk on those sidewalks. And, uh, I lived in the, uh, an apartment complex there, the Waxwood, and although I had a space, often I would drive in, and all the spaces were taken by people that were shopping in, uh, in Princeton. This is a serious problem. Another serious problem is, are these trucks? And I'll finish on that. I, I'm a walker and a jogger, I'm out every morning about 7:00 AM. The sidewalks in Princeton are adorable, they're filthy, and the odor is, uh, it, it's just unbearable. And, uh, because of the restaurants. Although I found the testimony today of great interest, I, I'm interested in business, and I will say that I think this restaurant proposal is entirely too large for the neighborhood. And, uh, I would hate to see, uh, this, this plan move forward and then not work out, as so many stores in, uh, Palmer Square have done. Thank you again for your consideration and your time.
Thank you.
How are you? Good evening. Michael Rodriks.
Sir, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Uh, yes, I do. Rodriks, R-O-D-R-I-C-K-S, I live on 64 Battle Road here in the community. So, uh, I'm a layperson, I have not an engineer, not a traffic consultant. I do own quite a number of businesses, none in the Mercer County area. And, uh, just really, uh, I want to say that, uh, the thorough, uh, detailed, extraordinarily comprehensive plan that David has laid out before us, uh, is just really outstanding. And, uh, I think the level of detail from the decibels and the SEER units on the air conditioning to the refrigeration of the trash, to when the trash is taken out, to- to the refrigeration of the trash, to when the trash is taken out, to the parking spots and the traffic egress, very, very detailed. When I look at this entire project, to me, it's you're moving a existing, very, very well-established restaurant, which has been a part of the community for more than a generation, two blocks. So it's obviously a substantially similar enterprise. When you, on top of that, you take a very historic building like the post office, which needs to be maintained and upgraded. It's been vacant for how many years? Four and a half years? So with the plans laid out by the architects here, Mr. Smith and Mr. Mills, that the historic building that is the post office, the architectural integrity, the substance of the building, the murals, and all of it will be maintained, I think that's a huge win for the community. And then not to mention when you bring in a very well-respected establishment like Triumph, which I love to eat at, you know, full disclosure, when you bring it into Palmer Square, I think it needs some life breathed into it, and I think this is the perfect establishment in the perfect spot in a very well-thought-out fashion to be moved to 20 Palmer Square. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak tonight?
Good evening. My name is Stuart Denver. I'm a partner at Fox Rothschild, and I represent Palmer Square.
Sir Denver, you swear affirm any testimony you provide this evening will be truthful?
I do, thank you. I've been here for two nights and had no intention of speaking because Palmer Square is not opposing this. We are not adverse to this at all. However, an issue arose tonight, which I have to raise with you and ask you to address, and it's something which would materially and adversely affect Palmer Square. And that is the sign that's on the south side of this building, in front of the building, which is a directional sign to the Nassau Inn. This to us, it would be detrimental if that sign is removed. Now, this is not something we feel is for negotiation. This is an absolute, this is significant and important to us. And if we can't get the applicant to agree now, affirmatively, expressly, to be a good neighbor and in the context of everything they're asking for, we ask that our sign that's been there for generations stay. If they cannot do that now, but want to barter later on, I ask the board to make it a condition of the approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I respond to that? This issue came up about 20 minutes ago in the middle of the hearing, and it was whispered in my ear, we'd like to keep that. My response was, I'm sure that's not going to be a problem, but I can't deal with this in the middle of a hearing. We've been talking, we'll continue to talk, let's make sure everything's together. But I don't see this as a problem, but I don't think it's fair to expect us, you know, in the middle of a hearing to sort of get to this thing where we say yes or no. I mean, we're going to talk about it, and again, we don't expect it to be a problem, but we'd like to at least understand the implications and all the impacts that it has.
I appreciate that. The implications to keeping the sign are no.
Well, it may count as a sign on our building.
Let me finish, please. The implications of continuing this, and we will negotiate, means in very clever, and Mr. Goldman's very good, that this is a bargaining chip. This is not a bargaining chip. We've been a good neighbor. We are Palmer Square, and we have not objected anything to this being in the midst of Palmer Square. We ask for our sign to be there, and I'm just going to ask the board to make that a condition. We are not going to enter to negotiations.
It's really unfair to call this a bargaining chip. Our clients met and talked, this wasn't raised, we're in the middle of a hearing. I told you, I don't think this is a problem, but I can't do it in the middle of a hearing.
Considering that we are going to continue this...
And we have time.
You have time to go back and discuss it with your clients and come to a decision that we can hear next time.
Good idea. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else? No.
Yaina Moore, 19 Green Street.
Ms. Moore, we need to swear again. Do you swear affirm any testimony you give will be truthful?
I certainly do.
Thank you.
I'm so glad that Mr. Goldman corrected the attorney here with regard to the weather in 2016, because it certainly was the coldest winter we had. And certainly, traffic and parking was down because the inclination of people, those two months, is that they weren't leaving the house at all. The distance to the garage, while it may be a thousand feet, again, a long route, and 700 about to Spring Street Garage through the A and B passageway, may be the shortest route, but the greatest attraction to parking is free parking, despite the distance. And that free parking, as Ms. Ciprell pointed out, is in the Witherspoon-Jackson neighborhood, Green Street being the first street, it's 1,500 feet away. People park there all the time, all day, all evening, to avoid parking fees from either the meters or the garages. And so any parking not provided by a facility such as this will certainly impact the neighborhood. Size is an issue. Just because the old post office is in a pre-existing building and it can accommodate 13,000 square feet doesn't mean that a new use that occupies a building of that size with greater intensity is either appropriate or can be serviced by the pre-existing area. And that's a real concern to all of us, I'm sure, the neighbor in Palmer Square as well, in that they have accommodated their uses, very planned retail office, residential and hospitality, with predetermined per-unit, per-square-foot parking spaces. So I really don't know where these people are going to park because they haven't necessarily parked here when they have been a block and a half, two blocks away in their prior location. Now, the character of a restaurant this size is certainly out of character with downtown Princeton. In fact, it may be even larger than restaurants in the shopping center. But the planning board and the town has certainly done a lot to try to restrict retail uses and retail square footage. Much of that has been sort of predetermined by the nature of the historic downtown district and pre-existing historic or smaller-scale buildings. So some of that work was done for itself, except for the fact that this post office building is unusually large for a prior, at quite a different intensity of use. And so in considering this as a use in this building as a structure, the planning board really should consider whether this is in line with the character of the neighborhood within which it is proposed in terms of its suitability in its size. Because it could be many things, or it could be multiple things within this single building of perhaps each individually smaller scale. This is sort of a big-box version of a restaurant in downtown. Now, the fact that it has a restaurant on the upper floor and the bars located in the basement, the reality of bar uses, as we can see even by the interior rearrangement and scale of what occurred at A and B, has had quite an interesting effect. Bringing the bar activity to the street, spillover uses, smokers, the entire passageway between A and B becoming quite a different environment if you've been by there in the evening. And there are people, because we have a smoking ordinance in the state, and it's pretty much going everywhere, even on the sidewalks, we have some public space restrictions to smoking. The outside exterior activity is, is an issue. Palmer Square as the public open space that the town owns is a family area, and it should be considered in terms of its character and use in that area, as well as how the streets on the backside or whatever, they're considering their front and back, but the bar entrance side, in terms of how that is managed. Because there are spillover effects that come outside of the neighborhood, outside of the restaurant, that impact the neighborhoods within which these types of restaurant bars actually occur. So those are my concerns, and I hope you will abide by them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, so we're going to, Kevin? Yes, okay.
Mr. Wilkes, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
One of the things that I think is, oh, I'm sorry, I'm Kevin Wilkes, W-I-L-K-E-S. One of the things that I admire about this proposal is the change of the building focus from its historical design, where the post office opened onto the green, the Nassau Green, and the Nassau Inn was moved back from Nassau Street to its present location in Palmer Square West, where Bent Spoon is located. That created the public spatial configuration of the lawn that everyone kind of understood as the public space of Palmer Square. And then what was curious in the 1980s, when the Nassau Inn expanded and built the long wing along Palmer Square East and restaurant, Teresa's Cafe and the place that's now Brooks Brothers, was in a sense, the post office changed its presence in a way from being an edge building with a main facade opening to the west, to an object at the center of a U-shaped configuration, which was always been outlined by the streets of Palmer Square, Palmer Square East down to Hullfish and back up. And what was always sort of sad to me was the fact that that rear facade that faced the street was really unattractive. The loading dock, the trucks, the cars, employees parked, you couldn't even actually walk on that side of the street. And what's remarkable to me about the design of this renovation of this historic building is it turns all four sides of this building into special space, interesting elevation, really makes it an object inside the U-shaped configuration of the buildings around it. And I think it's quite sensitive what Michael Mills and Terry Smith have done to pull this off. So one of the things you want to consider when you have a historic building of the importance that our post office represents, and which Michael testified, is will the applicant be a good steward of that treasure? Will they be somebody who will take a sense of pride and importance of the public interest that we have invested in that building because of its nature as being our post office historically, but also because of the compelling architecture? And will they advance that into the future? And I think we have good reason to believe that this group will, because they have been in our community for 22 years. They're not unknown to us. This is not a retail operation trying to sell clothes. We understand that retail is challenged in contemporary America. There's a prediction that in 10 years, 40% of the malls in America will close because of the challenge of the retail world now. So can we have a reason to believe that this applicant will value this building and will keep it as the special treasure that we feel it is? And I think they've proven through the integrity of their design and through their history in our community for 20 years that they will in fact do that. So I really support this application, and I hope you'll do the same.
Thank you. Now, is there, is there really no one else? Okay. Then I think that we should adjourn and we will see you all again.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. Wanda?
Yes.
We do need an extension to the September meeting, 28th.
Mr. Goldman, that's a yes? Okay.
Okay. Granted?
Granted.
Okay, and all of you, we'll put that on your calendars. All right. I move to adjourn. Okay, it's been moved in second to adjourn. Everybody in favor?
Aye.
And thank you all for staying later.